Sorry, sir. Go ahead. Sorry, Counsel Duffy.
I'd just like to also mention on the soccer, soccer theme you worship is that our friend Jimmy McDougal, ex-former police officer at UPEI, the retired policemen have formed a kind of a group where they hire themselves out to do security work. And Jim was asking me on the weekend if I could get 20 city pins for the officials that refereed the games out there because they are as police officers working that game or as their group. So those were delivered this morning for the officials.
Good. Thank you. There, Counsel Duffy. Did you have something to say there, Counsel Reverend?
I'll go in for my microphone just in case.
You want to go public?
No, no, just when I present. I don't have a microphone here, so I just take mine.
Counsel McLeod?
Did anyone else pick up on, uh, TBC was doing the announcing there. It was on Saturday. They actually said Charlottetown, Leavitt, or Flank?
There is a Charlottetown, enough length. There is.
But I have to say.
Yeah, there is. We had to buy, we had to buy the dot ca off the. Okay. Declarations of conflict of interest? Any new approval of the agenda? I know Counsel McCabe has something.
Yeah, I would like to take the policy that was in your package, record policy, remove that. That has to be added back to our committee before it comes to council and add the amended first reading of the code of conduct.
Sure. Okay. Was there going to be another change to that, I thought, or did you make that change?
Nope, that change was made.
Great. Any other amendments?
Just our Parks and Recreation Manager has another commitment, so if it's okay with council, following the planning, uh, to move the Parks and Recreation Committee report up.
So it becomes.
So our manager can.
Six point two, Your Worship. Six point two. And everything just moves down accordingly. Is that all right?
Your Worship, if Park and Rec want to go first and just planning second, that's fine. I just didn't want to move planning too far down the list because there's people here for, I'm guessing, the crowd. So if Park and Rec want to go first.
Allow that too there, Counsel Twill. Okay. Thank you, Counsel Reverend. Anybody's working on it?
Cooperation.
Okay. We have the adoption of previous draft minutes, regular monthly meeting on August 10th, special meetings open on the 17th to 25th, September 10th, and a public planning meeting on August 26th. Motion to move, moved by Counsel Reverend, seconded by Counsel Ramsey. All in favor?
I.
Any business arising?
No, but I do have a question.
From the minutes?
No.
Well, that's what we're talking about. Ask the business arising from the minutes. Okay, good. Move on?
Yep.
Call to the question.
Call to the question. All in favor of business arise?
Okay, I do have a point.
Go ahead.
Tell me something, Counsel. I know that Counsel Ron over the number of months brought up the audio, the audio system so that when people are watching proceedings online, like, what, what's it going to take for that system to work effectively so that people that are watching at home, whether it's our standing committee meetings or whether it's meetings of city council? What's it going to take for that system to be finally, uh, brought into the modern era?
Okay, Counsel Duffy mentioned from last Saturday's meeting, if you're wrestling with your papers, clicking your paint, did you hear all about Counsel Duffy?
Yeah.
And you have to speak into the mic. That's very important. Don't sit back and speak from the back of your chair. You have to speak right into the mic.
But I think the other thing to add to that, Your Worship, is not necessarily, it could be coming from here. If there's more than one on that, it could be someone's not muted at home. So if they're going through a tape, someone's going through their mic.
Okay.
And he's picking up because he never heard a lot of that.
Anyway, I wanted to bring it to everyone's attention.
Yeah.
Because there are people that are.
Yeah, Counsel Twill, we'll look into it. We're just going to get moving.
I understand that, but anyway, it just seems to be reoccurring.
So please speak into the mic. I know that you do a good job, Counsel Reverend, when you're doing it, but just make sure that we all pertain to the rules. Okay? Okay, first report. I think we're going to get the Counsel Twill. Do you want to present?
Yeah, the report's in your package. We have one resolution tonight for city council's consideration. I will do my best to answer any questions.
Okay. Counsel McCabe and then Counsel Duffy.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Twill. I'm just a question around the trail grass in Andrew, around the new pond in Andrew's Pond. Does Parks and Rec maintain that grass cutting? Is that the responsibility of Parks and Rec?
Believe the trail. Yes, it is.
Okay, wonderful. So if there, if there was noticeable where it might, someone might get in and trim back some of that grass, just to note into the department?
Trail.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Counsel Duffy?
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, members of council, we will all recall that back on August the 25th, we sat in this room at lunchtime and we passed a resolution authorizing Centennial Park pathways to be laid down and that was passed nine to one with myself being the second voter on that. I'm not here to argue that. I respect the decision of council and I live with the decision of council, but the issue that I'm bringing up tonight, Your Worship, members of council, is our friend Dave Stewart did an article in The Guardian, and I'm not here to condemn Counsel Twill or criticize him, but I think he might have left the wrong impression, and I do this with respect. He might have left the wrong impression with the general public. He said, there's two small paragraphs. It says here that Counsel Mitchell Twill, Chairman of Council Standing Committee on Parks and Recreation, said the money for both these projects, they're talking about Mulberry and Centennial Park, both these projects, uh, were already in the departmental budget. Money was simply moved from other projects to these ones. In addition, both projects were listed in the Parks and Recreation Department capital project plans in February. So Twill said members of council have had seven months to visit the parks to formulate an opinion, and that was in result of my request to have a week to 10 days to firm it so folks could go out and see where we were spending the money. I searched back into the capital budget as Counsel Twill referred to, and I note that although $141,000 was on the docket to be approved on that very day, the capital budget listed two allocations of $30,000 each for a total of $60,000. So Parks and Recreation were $81,000 short. So if I had gone, as was suggested, in February, March, April, and took a little trot out to Centennial Park to see what was going on there, and I saw the pathways and checked my capital, capital budget, I would see that we're going to spend $60,000 here this year in these, and I'd say, that's a really good deal. I mean, for all the asphalt work that's done out there. But in fact, it was $141,000 was the price tag. So I, and it doesn't say here, but it kind of implies that the Mulberry Park paving was done, and this is just surplus funds added into the walkways to bring it up to the 141,000. So when you say it didn't cost the taxpayer anything, that's really not true because we can be guaranteed that that $81,000 that we lost this year, speaking from the Mulberry paving job, they'll be back, the park people will be back in, in February, March, asking for the $81,000 to be put back in because now it's time to do the Mulberry. So to say that it didn't cost the taxpayer anything is not true. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
You just wanted to crack that for public record. Okay?
Okay.
Go ahead, Counsel Twill.
Thank you, Counsel Duffy. Usually in these situations, what I try to say is that it's not new monies in, in the Parks and Recreation budget. We're just moving one line item to another. So I believe that's what I said. I wouldn't say it was additional money coming from outside Parks and Recreation Department. So that's, I believe that's what I said. You know, in any, any one of these resolutions where the department will look at other line items is usually the norm in any one of the resolutions that come forward. It's not new monies in terms of additional new monies for that department. It's a line item that, or a project that we're not going to be pursuing this year. So we've taken some of the monies, what's required, and moved it over, and I believe that's what was illustrated in the resolution and then council over.
But with all due respect, Counsel Twill, it will end up costing the taxpayers $81,000, no matter which way you cut it.
Yeah, but it's not new monies. It's, it's not new monies as far as the department is concerned, right? It's, it's monies that's already in the, in the capital projects, and we moved some of the monies over, as you pointed out, correctly pointed out, from the Mulberry parking lot, which we're not going to do this year. So a recommendation came from staff that will take some of those dollars and move it over to complete the Centennial, Centennial Park pathways.
But if you didn't touch it at all.
Yeah.
The taxpayer wouldn't be asked in the new year coming up to be forking over $81,000 again. That's costing the taxpayers twice $81,000 to get Mulberry.
Well, you know what, guys? Could, could we just do this?
Sure.
The resolutions already been passed, right? Has the work started, Frank?
Yes, yes, it has.
Frank, is it?
Started last Friday morning.
It has, it has. Well, it's, we understand. I think we understand what's going on.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, I guess the point I'm trying to make, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, this is not a new, a new procedure. It's not a new process. It's been going on in this chamber.
For years.
For the last hundred years, as far as I know. So it's not a new norm. It's, it's not something that's, uh, you know, we're carving out new territory in terms of how we, we fund projects. I mean, a number of projects are earmarked at a certain, a certain amount, and nine times out of 10, the department, regardless, it could be Public Works, it could be Water and Sewer, they will come back and say, you know what? We need, we need additional funding to, these are unforeseen circumstances that we didn't, certainly didn't anticipate, and.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Twill. That was a good way to explain. Counsel Bernard, McLeod, and then Daron. Counsel Bernard?
I was just going to clarify. Basically, you said that both projects came in over budget, so they can only do one, one project. So they took the money out of, the Parks and Rec manager had suggested doing the Centennial pathways, so both projects rolled. They couldn't do both without getting new money. The planning agency wants to keep the budget on track, so with no new money, it's just subtractive from one project that they couldn't do, put it into the other one. Counsel Duffy, I understand what you're saying because next year, when you go to do the Park and Lot project, it will require new money, but that will be in the new budget too.
That's right.
So what's, what's been budgeted and passed, that number stays the same for 2021.
Thank you, there, Counsel Bernard. Counsel McLeod?
Um, just a point to be taken. In past meetings, Counsel Dron has always mentioned, like, well, how come the engineering study's done and, and I'm not getting the project done, right? It was, you know, it's been three years, four years. Well, this is why, right? Because we're Rob and Peter who pay for all all the time, right? So, you know, now I'm sure Mulberry will be expected to be on that hit list again next year, but wait a minute, there's all kinds of other projects coming through at the same time. It deserves airshot.
And they'll go through the same process.
Same, well, I just, you know, the $80,000 waiting necessarily to be there from order next year. I guess my, maybe go out and go back to Dron.
Thank you, Counsel Dron.
Well, thank you, Your Worship. You know, what this project means, it means that, you know, people in our community can get the same type of service as the people downtown in the four heritage squares. I've worked with Counsel Twill over the last number of years to try to get, you know, parity with, with other places in, in the city. You know, we, we deserve a walkway that can be plowed in the wintertime so our residents can walk. So, you know, this, this might seem like a lot of money, but why shouldn't we get what other areas of the city get? That's what I, you know, I've always pushed for. Just, you know, everybody's equal here. And another thing in the comments, since you brought the paper up, you referred to Centennial Park as, as the, what was it? The business district, central, or no, what was it? Central, Central Park or something?
Times Square.
Times Square. Centennial Park is not a Times Square. Well, it's a jewel, jewel of the city as well. I think you meant that could be referred to Central Park, not Times Square. I just thought we'd throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Central Park, Times Square. What about Stanley Park in Vancouver? Do we have a resolution there, Counselor?
Just before we move on.
But the resolution's already been passed. The work's starting, right? We're done?
You did a good job, yeah. Very good job.
You want to go to the resolution?
Thank you, counsel for helping.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Your Worship, moved by Counsel Twill, seconded by Counsel Bernard. Resolved, that as per recently advertised request for quotes, Cody Bank's Arena ice resurfacer replacement. The city of Charlottetown accepts a bid of $103,350 plus applicable taxes from Saunders Equipment Limited, Your Worship.
Add anything to there, Counsel Twill, or do you want to defer to, yield to the manager?
No, it's pretty sound.
Questions called.
Questions called. Moved by Counsel Ramsey, seconded by?
No, 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 no. Moved by myself.
Oh, sorry about that, sir.
It's all right.
Counsel Twill, moved by Counsel Twill.
And Bernard.
Counsel Bernard, sorry about that.
No problem.
All those favor. Ten zero.
Just, just one point. Counsel McCabe, the grass you were talking about, so it was just on the trail, right? It wasn't, you know, a few feet off the trail?
It just needs a little cleaning up in there. That's all.
On the trail?
Yeah, it's kind of now grown out. The bush is grown out, so it's just a little bit challenging to walk through.
Just a weed whacker.
Yeah. People are in there all the time. It's great. Wonderful track.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. Frank? Twenty after five.
Weird.
Now we're going to the Reverend report.
I may as well feed up for this one.
Also, one is planning.
I've never seen a binder so thick as this one, this month. Wonder how many trees went down for this?
Dot gel repurposed package.
Do you want to start, sir, or do you want to?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Your Worship. Planning board met on Tuesday, September 8th. The reports are, are in your package. Heritage Board met on Monday, August 31st, and again, reports are in your package. And Design Review met on August the 7th and Friday, September 4th, and once again, the documents are in your package. We have 11 resolutions for, for consideration tonight as well as a number of readings. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer. If I can answer them, I'll be directing them to our esteemed leader of planning, Mr. Forbes.
Forbes.
The golfer.
The golfer.
Counsel Twill?
Yeah. Thank you for your report. Is it possible that the department can?
Counsel Twill, remember what you were saying with people listening? You have to speak into the mic. You're back to.
It's right there.
I know.
You have to get close to it.
Unless you speak louder.
Foghorn, anyway.
Foghorn Leghorn.
Foghorn, anyway. Is it possible, is it possible for the department to give us a tally on how many apartment buildings have been built in the last year? How many apartment buildings are anticipated to be built for this year? Is it 1,000? Is it 1,500? Can we get some kind of a, an ballpark figure of how many apartment buildings, people are asking in the community about all this development that's taking place, and they want to, they'd like to get some kind of a record of how many apartment buildings are being built. So I know the department's busy, one of the busiest departments in the city of Charlottetown, but is that possible to get that information so we can have a general idea when we're voting on resolutions or, you know, your back is put to the wall because there's either a crisis or there's apparently a concern or, or, you know, we got to do all this stuff. Guns are put to our head. We, we need to have that information, and the community is asking for that information.
Counsel Reverend, can you answer that, or you want Alex answered?
No. I've got it, Your Worship. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Twill, for your question. I will put together something with, with the help of Alex, and we will send something out to all of council by the end of this week.
So, thank you. And what I'm looking for is last, this year and.
Comparative analysis.
This year and the anticipated apartments are going to be built for next year.
Okay.
So we at least have a two years snapshot.
Yeah. Counsel Duffy, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Counsel Reverend. Counsel Reverend, since this council has come into administration, I guess we're a couple of months short of two years, quite, quite a few of our requests have ended up in Iraq. I'm not sure the number that there are there, but can you kind of give us, we don't seem to be getting too many speedy replies from Iraq, and I was just wondering, can you give us some sort of an overview of what, what the issues may be or whatever? And the one I'm particularly interested in is the Chair of Public Works is the amendment to the M2 heavy industrial, adding a permitted use will be, which would be asphalt. We just finished talking about, you know, the cost of asphalt and that sort of thing. We want to set up a, an economy here in Charlottetown where there's competition. Competition is good. People can compete with each other in, in their industry, and the city can benefit from getting a very good price. And witness to that is that I asked Mr. Adams, our city engineer, of how much it costs us to lay asphalt on city streets here, which we tender in May, and the answer was approximately $22 a square meter and two inches thick. That, that, here's a meter, square meter. And while Counsel Twill and his Centennial Park walkways, he is paying, I believe, in the vicinity of $255 a square meter. So he's paying 12 times as much because the tender went out later and all the asphalt people are busy. So that, you know, that's how competition goes, supply and demand, and that drives the price up. So that's the basis of my question. It's a kind of an overview of what's outstanding, waiting for appeal, and in particular, what is the holdup? It's simply an amendment to a, a zoning bylaw or a zoning classification we have, M2. Every municipality in Canada that would have an asphalt plant in their city would have that in a heavy industrial area. So I don't understand why it's taken 15 months to get a, a simple answer. Explain that to me.
Counsel Reverend?
All right. I was anticipating this question at some point, so I do have the information.
You do?
Or not. I do.
You have the decision?
Oh, I don't want the decision. That wasn't the question. So indulge me for a second, counsel. So there, there is, there is seven applications right now that, that are either, that have been heard by Iraq or that are in the process, but I'll just run through them that way everybody knows and the public knows. So Palmer's Lane, the hearing was February 12th of 2020. Decision is pending. There is the asphalt plant appeal. It was heard on the 24th and 20 to 26th of 2020. Again, decision pending. Queen Street project, there's a hearing July 9th on the, on the law consolidation, and that decision is, is pending, so that's been heard. UPEI appeal was heard July 30th, 2020, and again, decision still pending. The Bradley Point Road, September 2, it was scheduled for the 15th and 16th of September and rescheduled at the request of the applicant, so the hearing will likely be this fall at some point. And then reconsideration and appeals pending. We have, of course, 18 Trainer Street, and the, the complaint, I'm sorry, has made a FOIP request to the city and is waiting for a review of this material, so we're expecting probably something in October for reconsideration here. And then 385 Queen Street. This is, yeah, they're, they're going to be coming for reconsideration as well soon. So those are the seven that are currently on the docket right now. And back to the second part of Counsel Duffy's question with regards to the asphalt plant. So normally what would happen is, again, this is, it was a text amendment, and we, we can't recall any time that a text amendment hasn't been, hasn't been signed. Kind of what happens is that if city council approves something, the province usually signs off. If there's an appeal made within the 21 days, staff can still issue a permit, but on that permit shows that, that the, that the application is under appeal or council's decision's under appeal, and that if the decision is reversed in the future, that the applicant would have to basically return the properties back to what they were. So that's kind of the process. So this, this one is a little different for sure.
Your Worship? Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Counsel Reverend. To say the decision, decision is pending or the hearing is pending or the reconsideration or whatever, like, like, that means it's in the queue. Where is it in the queue? No one knows. And why is it still in the queue? Like, it seems like an awful long time. I'll take, for example, go back to number two there, the asphalt plant. It left this council chamber in June of 2019. It's left here with the second reading of the bylaw. So it was over in August. So it never got posted at Iraq until December. It's six months later, and they heard it in June of this year, a year later, and now it's three months after June, of course, so it's 15 months after it left this council chamber. I don't understand for a simple amendment to zoning bylaw, which is, there's nobody arguing the fact that asphalt plants are not destined for M2 heavy industrial zoning. So I don't, I, I really, I think it could be, only could be the simplest of simplest. Where is it getting hung up and why?
And Your Worship, I mean, that's, that's a question unfortunately that I can't answer, and that's with, that's with Iraq themselves. Again, I, I don't know, I'm guessing COVID at some point played a role as well in, in how Iraq functioned and what they were allowed to hear and what they weren't hearing. So, yeah, I can't, I don't know why the delay. I don't know why the delay now.
Alex, can you shed any light? Is that, Mr. Reverend, Counsel Reverend, ask Alex if he can provide some backup?
Unless he knows something that we don't.
Again, I, it's, you know, when these items are reviewed at Iraq, they, you know, it's in their, their sort of purview, and they, it's hard to say what else is going on over at Iraq, so we're generally just in a holding pattern until they, they respond back to us. But this one has taken, you know, to Counsel Duffy's point, it has taken a considerable amount of time, and there was somewhat of a new way that the province dealt with that appeal, and so they delayed signing off on it, and then that prevents us again from even issuing a permit. So this one has sort of had a, sort of a life of its own, but hopefully we'll get a decision on that soon from Iraq and be able to move forward in some capacity or, you know, whatever we need to do.
Your Worship, last, could we not ask? I mean, they're public service like we are. A friendly question is, like.
I, I can certainly make that request and say that it was brought up at council and that, you know, if they could provide me with any kind of a, you know, input, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Thank you, Counsel Reverend.
Thank you. Counsel Bernard? Oh, just, and then Counsel Dron. Counsel Bernard?
Yeah, I'm just curious. And Counsel Reverend, if you want to send it to the manager, but I'm just wondering. And Counselor Verde, if you want to send it to the manager, but I'm just wondering, tax amendments, it's a good thing you bring it up. Usually there's zoning changes or whatever, you see it going to Iraq if people don't agree. I've never heard of a tax amendment going. I'm just curious, is that, is this something that's new? Have you ever heard of a tax amendment going to Iraq before?
Your worship, what was different with this is that the province always.
Signed off.
They usually sign off.
Didn't sign off in this one, did they?
And then they, you know, for whatever reason, as when we were going through this one, I was told that if they think or they know something is going to go to appeal, they are not prepared to sign off.
But isn't the appeal with Iraq just to make sure that the city followed proper procedures?
Correct, right. But the province, what happens is that you do your work here, it's sent to the province to review, to make sure the process was followed correctly, and then they will give us a decision and then everybody still has the ability to appeal to Iraq.
Right.
But in this case, it's been appealed to Iraq without the province indicating whether they feel that it, you know, whether it met their test. So, we don't know the answer to that. And like on another appeal or any other appeal, as long as the province signs it, I can issue a permit. We do give a cautionary letter, say you're on your own, if this goes bad for you at Iraq, you're going to have to remedy the problem. But we can't do that in this one because the province hasn't made it legal. They haven't made it into law. So, they did sort of take a different tact on this. I don't know whether that's what they intend to do on all applications they feel in future are going to be under appeal, but this has been new, at least in my seven years here.
So, this is new to you for.
That they would not sign, they would not just sign off, but that the minister gave his approval.
Counsel Dron?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you. I'd just like to comment on Counselor Duffy's question to Counselor Verde about the silly, you know, 12 times the cost. Like, when you build a road, say if we build a road, whatever, Spencer Drive, you're going to have to put down rock, shale, then the asphalt, it all comes with a cost. Well, Centennial Park, you know, the pathway has been done before amalgamation, so it's very old. It wasn't paved on a proper base. So, this is where the cost comes in. They have to take the pavement up, the old cracked rotten pavement, put some shale down, and then pavement. So, that's where the cost is. I don't think asphalt went up that much 12 times just because of the paving. I think it's the whole thing. Like I said, any street we do in the city, especially the Chair of Public Works must know that there's some that you just skim the top off and that's cheaper, or there's some that you have to take right down to the shale. So, that's where the extra cost is. I just want to clarify about that. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Yankoff? Yes.
Unless it's for somebody else.
No, no. It's a planning question?
I have a question and I'm thinking it's probably more for Mr. Forbes if I can ask that.
It's up to the chair. The chair can yield to the manager.
Okay.
Manager can feel what it's like.
So, a few of my residences have reached out to me and they're concerned that UPEI has a temporary construction and parking area that's zoned R2 and they are, so they're using a piece of property that is not in compliance to what is what they're supposed to do. They've been using it for quite some time and to no avail. They have, they have reached out to the planning department and from what I understand, it's been confirmed that yes, they are correct. They shouldn't be there. I'm just wondering where we're at with that because I've got some frustrated residents wondering what the process is now.
Your worship, so in regard to that inquiry, that came to our attention maybe like a week ago. We looked into it. The resident was correct. We did notify UPEI that they were, they were not, you know, in compliance with the zoning bylaw. So, they will be making an application to the planning board for temporary use to, coming to this council, to seek approval for those temporary trailers.
So, just as a follow-up. So, do they just move them until that time or do they stop working or?
Typically, when somebody is, whether it's them or anyone else, if they're seeking a remedy, the remedy is to go to the planning board. It doesn't take very long. Like litigation takes months and months and months. So, they will go to the planning board and they will seek approval. If they don't get it, then we have a clear direction. They will be made to commit to compliance. But they're on, they're attempting to bring that property into compliance with the zoning bylaw through the planning board. That happens almost every month. Planning board people do things. They have the right to go to planning board, see if planning board is willing to give them relief or make them comply.
Okay. And do I have one more?
Oh, okay, yes.
And just then, on this similar kind of comparison, there's another property on Prince Street where there was a fire a few years ago that has been continuously being used as a parking lot. And again, it's not zoned parking.
No, no.
And that's been a few years and that, there's still parking. And do they have to come up in compliance? Can, where are we at with that?
That one I'm not familiar with, but if you send me the details on that, we'll certainly follow up on it. And if they're not in compliance, I mean, I can't give anybody, somebody, it's a very black and white. You're either in compliance or you're not in compliance.
Right.
If you're not in compliance, you'll get a letter from the city of Cheryltown.
Right.
Please remedy the situation quickly or we'll indicate their options, but they have to comply.
Yeah, the correspondence did come back from planning that they were, confirmed that they were in fact not to be parking there.
Right.
So, that there was a file.
Right, right. Sometimes too, it's kind of a cat and mouse game. They fix it for a while and then, you know, we go away and then they reinstitute it and it's just a matter of resources to stay on top of these things. But if we're made aware of it, we will pursue it.
Right.
And enforcement is an issue too because as I said, we don't have the power to enforce these things without filing court injunction. So, it makes it a little more difficult, you know, while we can send and fill your mailbox full of letters unless we're willing to take that next step and go and pay those additional costs and the time that's required to litigate is challenging. But we have been in conversation with the province and working towards hopefully getting
Summary.
Some enforcement tools, if you will. So, you know, sit tight on that one.
Yeah, summary offense, ticketing, right?
Yeah.
And Counsel Yankoff, it was brought to my attention last year and I did speak to Alex about the parking down there and it was taken care of. And then, as Alex said, they're back doing it. It was already addressed.
So, maybe that's what fines have to be handed out.
That's, that's why I think what Counsel Verde is saying, going through the trial, the court system just takes too much time. Okay, first resolution? Do you want to go with it?
Your worship. Moved by Counsel Verde, second by Deputy Mayor Cody, that the request for temporary replacement of three temporary mobile trailers at 58 Maple Avenue, PID 480475 be approved, subject to the submission of a building and development permit, your worship.
Question?
Question called.
Okay, all those in favor? Put your hand. Against? Counsel Duffy, for or against?
For.
Thank you. I'll go to that one, sir.
Yes, your worship. Moved by Counsel Verde, second by Deputy Mayor Cody, that the request to amend Appendix A of the official plan map from low density residential to commercial and amend Appendix G of the zoning and development bylaw from the low density residential R2 zone to the mid mixed use corridor MUC zone in order to rezone a portion of approximately 416 square meters of the property located at 12 Valley Street, PID 358192 be approved to proceed to public consultation, your worship.
So, let's just go to public meeting. Question?
Question called.
Okay, all those in favor, go to public consultation. Okay.
Your worship, moved by Counsel Verde, second by Deputy Mayor Cody, that the request to amend Appendix G of the zoning and development bylaw from the shopping center commercial C3 zone to the mixed use corridors MUC zone in order to rezone the vacant property located at 35 Conley Street, PID 358556 be approved.
Okay. Question? Question called. All those in favor? 10-0.
Your worship, moved by Counsel Verde, second by Deputy Mayor Cody, that the request to amend Appendix A of the official plan map of the low, from low density residential to medium density residential and to amend Appendix G of the zoning and development bylaw from the low density residential R2 zone to the medium density residential R3 zone and obtain a major variance to reduce a lot frontage for an apartment dwelling on the corner lot in the medium density residential R3 zone from 94, sorry, from 98.4 feet to approximately 53.87 feet in order to permit a four unit apartment building located at 40 to 42 Kensington Road, 3 Park Street, PID 365676 be approved.
Question?
Counsel McLeod and Counsel Yankoff.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, your worship. Just wanted to express how excited I am and the residents of the area. This has been a problem property for some time and there's actually been, some in the neighborhood have moved out because of it. So, it's really good, this is a, you know, you know, as you can see by what had to be requested, it took a bit of doing and I appreciate planning and I appreciate staff and council for the work on this and hopefully we'll have a favorable vote here this evening. But as Counsel Twill has mentioned, with his frustrations, just to have one of these houses move out of town is wonderful and I thank the police as well. Big file. Thank you very much.
Thank you there. Counsel Yankoff?
Thank you. So, I have been by this property. I think as Counsel McLeod said, it's such an improvement. It's a, it's a great use of the space. I am only slightly concerned that we're moving it from an R2 and spot zoning to an R3. And I realize that Counsel Verde had pointed out that with the lot size, you can never get more than that anyways. But what happens in a few years' time if we change a bylaw and two or three councils down the road and all of a sudden the space is allowed to have, they don't have to be that big and all of a sudden a big apartment building goes up there or a 10 unit? Can we put something in there to protect the neighborhood so that it will always be a four unit?
Counsel Verde?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Counsel Yankoff. Yes, we can. And even the applicant had mentioned that he was okay with adding further refuge into the development agreement.
Yeah.
Or agreement to say that it's not going to be anything more than this.
Yeah.
I mean, we can do something like that, I'm guessing, you know.
He agreed to that.
If challenged later on in life, three councils from now, I mean, I have no idea if it would stand the test of time, but we can certainly put it in.
Is that all right, Counsel Yankoff?
Yeah, yeah.
Counsel Bernard? And then Counsel McLeod?
I was just going to add that, as Counsel Yankoff said, I mean, future councils, regardless of what you put in place, can change.
Yeah.
So, you know, to say to put something in now and it's not going to change in 10 years' time, it can change the next council.
Oh, I've seen that.
It doesn't really, it's not a safeguard, it's going to protect it forever and the council's, it changes all the time.
Counsel McLeod?
Thank you very much. Question for Counsel Verde. So, at the present time, the zoning, if this building was to be burnt down or taken down for whatever reason, what is he able to build at the present time under this zoning?
Yeah, my understanding is four to five maximum. I think it's four, actually, to what the planning had mentioned to myself based on the lot size. Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Counsel Twill?
Maybe something, the safeguard.
I keep telling them.
Safeguard that, you know, it's four apartments and that it's not going to, like R3, maybe something could be either added, amended to the resolution or developer's agreement. So, let's be proactive.
Yeah.
That also puts in the safeguard and protects the neighborhood from, if this particular gentleman, say in a year's time, decides to sell the property and there's a mechanism in place to protect the integrity of the neighborhood. I think most of that neighborhood, Counsel McLeod, correctly, is R2. There's a lot of single family homes in that neighborhood, whether it be in Belmont, whether it be Park Street, of course Kensington Road. So, just as a suggestion, maybe, maybe you can, if you want to do an amendment to the resolution or have the developer property owner sign a developer's agreement.
I think that's what Counsel Verde said. And Counsel Twill, again, you have to speak into the mic. It's not picking it up well enough.
Okay.
The world wants to hear you.
Your worship, the other part of this too, if it's not a heritage home, I mean, again, if the applicant decided to sell next year and someone came in and decided they wanted to demolish the home, they would be permitted to build a four unit there. So, I mean, there's nothing you can, you can, you can put as much as you want on paper, but you can't stop someone from doing that.
But you want to put something in the development agreement, correct?
So, you can.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that, again, we're limited on what we can and can't do and just because, let's say, you add it to a resolution sometimes doesn't, it doesn't stop the landlord or homeowner, you know, their rights as well. So, again, if they want to tear down the house next year, we couldn't stop a demolition permit.
Right.
If that's what they so choose. But again, they're limited to what they can build there based on square footage of the lot, as Counsel McLeod had pointed out.
Counsel Twill?
Yeah.
Final comments?
Yeah, just on that, I still, I think the point's well taken. I, it'd be nice to be proactive and have something either in the resolution or a developer's agreement and I would ask for a solicitor, if he could offer some advice to city council before we take the vote.
You have to put that through the chair?
What?
You have to put that through the chair. But I think we pretty well.
Your worship, we'll get staff to add something to the development agreement.
Can I, I mean, the solicitor's here. Can I ask a question?
Can we get Alex? Like, I think guys were really complicated.
Your worship, the, I think the easiest way to deal with this, you know, a development agreement costs the applicant $700 to register. It's an expensive tool. You could just say in order to permit a maximum of four apartment units at 42 Kensington Road.
In the resolution?
Right, exactly.
Okay, amend the resolution. You want to amend the resolution, Counsel?
But the R3 zone for that piece of property only allows anyways.
What's that?
I said the R3 zone, that property size, only allows four anyways.
Right. But if they want the clarity, that will hopefully, instead of getting a development agreement.
That's fine, just, yeah, it's just redundant, but that's fine.
Yep.
Okay, they're just looking at managing it to the, so we're kicking at four units.
That's all it ever could be.
Yeah. And you know that, then across the road, across Kensington Road, you do have three apartment buildings, Civic Towers and then the old Prince Edward Island Hospital. I think all together, but 120 apartments.
I do.
Just one second, just, Counsel, did you amend it there, sir? Do you want to read it? Could you read it again?
Yes, your worship.
Please, thank you. Into the mic. The world is listening.
Moved by Counsel Verde, second by Counsel Dron, that amend Appendix A of the official plan map from low density residential to medium density residential. amend Appendix G of the zoning and development bylaw from the low density residential R2 zone to the medium density residential R3 zone and obtain a major variance to reduce the lot frontage for an apartment dwelling on the corner lot in the medium density residential R3 zone from 98.4 feet to approximately 53.87 feet in order to permit a maximum of four unit apartment building located at 40 to 42 Kensington Road, 3 Park Street, PID 365676 be approved, your worship.
Okay. Question?
Question called.
Okay, all of those in favor of the amended resolution? Counsel Duffy? Okay, 10-0.
Good project, Terry. Good for him.
Your worship, moved by Counsel Verde, second by Deputy Mayor Cody, that the request to amend the development concept plan and development agreement to increase the density from 60 to 62 units as it pertains to 53 Towers Road, Lot 2014-5, PID 1076702 be approved.
Okay. Question?
Question called.
Question called. All those in favor? Oh, no, no. 10-0?
10-0.
Your worship, moved by Counsel Verde, second by Counsel McCabe, that the request to amend Appendix B of the zoning and development bylaw, comprehensive development area CDA parcels and permitted uses for the properties located at Mount Edward Road, PID 390534,
parcels and permitted uses, for the properties located at Mount Edward Road, PID 390534, 390559, and 390542. Amend appendix A of the official plan map of the zoning, sorry, from low-density residential to concept plan area, for the property at Mount Edward Road, PID 390542, and a portion of PID 390559. And thirdly, amend appendix G of the zoning and development bylaw from low-density residential R2-S to comprehensive development area CDA, for the property located at Mount Edward Road, PID 390542, and a portion of PID 390559, your worship.
Okay. Did you want, is there anything else that conditions, the attachments, that don't bring back? Councillor McCabe, councillor Durham?
So, I did second this motion to get it on the floor, but at planning board, I just wanted to be clear, I had asked for a deferral on this application, waiting for the traffic study to come in from the city, to give us some indication about whether or not there'd be issues with traffic. We didn't get it through planning board, and that's fine, but we're here tonight, we were kind of indicated that we would have that report prior to council, we did not see that traffic report again tonight, so I won't be supporting this application tonight. I would support a deferral until we gather the information.
Do you want to move a deferral?
I would move a deferral on this application.
Seconded by councillor Yankoff? Yes?
Yep.
Okay, question with deferral?
So, your worship, do you want, can I just speak to you just for a second?
Oh, oh, sorry, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, thank you councillor, councillor McCabe, sorry. We did discuss this at planning board meeting, and, again, at that time, councillor McCabe's right, that we were, Alex Forbes, the manager, had indicated that we were expecting to have the full traffic study from, for the city, done of the whole area, by Friday, Monday. That report, unfortunately, was not received, and, again, as Alex had pointed out, and even myself, but Alex pointed out that we can defer tonight, of course, and I certainly support a deferral if we don't have all the information, but we were expecting to have all the information here, is why we defeated the deferral at the planning board, but I have no issue deferring it for tonight, and hopefully that the report should be here, what, Mr Forbes, in a week or two, we're hoping, at the latest?
Yeah, your worship, there's two parts to that traffic study, there's the part that deals with this property only, and that came in, in a draft form today, and there's, you know, the, that can be refined, and if the council so desires, the planning board could possibly have either a special meeting to ask questions about that.
Yeah.
And then the larger master plan for the entire area is, it's with CBCL, and I'm not 100% certain, you may wish to ask the guy, the manager of Public Works, when he's in, as to the timeline that he anticipates for the large study, but...
Oh.
The parcel, the portion that's dealing with this property has been done, it came in as a draft today, and it, just because it came in, and, you know, it needs to be reviewed in more detail, but we can have some time, and we can resolve that.
Councillor McCabe?
Just to follow up to that, because I think, I think, correct, we, you know, the big master plan, this is important in this picture, when you're looking at development of any kind of parcel property, I think that we did receive emails today from residents in town, talking about the connection to Ash Drive, that changes the whole dynamic when you're looking at development, so it would be great to have an idea of what the big plan is, before we're expected to vote on this application. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alex, thank you councillor McCabe. Okay, question on the deferral? Question?
Yep.
Okay, all of those in favor of the deferral, please raise your hand. 10-0.
Your worship, move by councillor Revered, second by councillor Daphne McCarty, that request to amend appendix B of the zoning and development bylaw, comprehensive development area CDA parcels and permitted uses, and two, amend appendix A of the official plan from institutional and employment to concept plan area, and three, amend the appendix G of the zoning and development bylaw from institutional I-zone, and business paragon Dushal M3-zone, to a comprehensive development area CDA-zone, and four, to approve the working site plans of buildings one and two, of the proposed comprehensive development plan for the properties located at 115 Murchison Lane, and PID number 4255892, and 691162, be approved, subject to the signing of a development agreement.
Please get a question first.
Sure.
Councillor Bernard, you want to ask a question to the chair?
Councillor Revered, when we hit the public meeting, and we hit the tour, and we talked to the municipal representatives, there was some concern about traffic, traffic movements, and I know for the campus, for the mental health in Dickens Campus, they did a traffic study just for the campus. I don't want to slow this project down, it's a good project, and the sooner they can get up and get going, the sooner it starts helping people that need help. But I don't want to leave, I don't want to leave the problems off the hook, so to speak, I guess, whether we do a traffic study or they do. My concern is, when the problems come in, and did the 60-unit apartment building, and then the 27 units, seniors apartment building, so there's 87 units that are coming on stream. That lower end of Fieldsboro Park, about 12, 15 years ago, the problems cut off the access from Pioneer Drive onto the bypass highway. That lower area's grown exponentially in the last 10, 12 years, it's a lot of traffic. Patterson Drive's becoming the 401. So, you have a community center on Patterson Drive, you have the large park on Patterson Drive, you have the outdoor rink on Patterson Drive, there's a lot of kids going back and forth. So, looking for a release valve, basically down that lower end to get traffic out. Now, anyone that's heading west down that area, they're not going to get down to the Queen Elizabeth Hospital, go through the lights, and then come back and head west. They're all going to go up Patterson Drive. So, just looking, to keep the focus on the traffic study, or the problems of putting a slip lane in anyway, coming off, it's a cadian drive that runs up there to that slip lane, and then have access, at least, to go out to go west. So, I don't think the province has got back to planning on that, I don't believe. So, I just want to keep the focus on that, that's really important, this is an important project, don't want to hold it up, but that will add traffic to what's already being added of the 87 units that are coming on stream. So, I don't know if it's planning that would keep the feet to the fire for the province, or does the city, through planning, go ahead and do our own traffic study? Because none was done for the 87 units that's coming on street. That was, that was the area that was zoned, pardon me?
No, no.
That was, that was the area that was zoned, and the province had to write for the zoning, and they just went ahead and built it, there was no meetings, there was no traffic study on it. But now it's getting to be a concern with the amount of growth down there. So, I guess my question to planning is, who keeps the feet to the fire to see if we can get that release valve for traffic to get out from that lower end, requiring a traffic study, I would think.
Councillor Revered, and then you want your...
That's all right, no, no, that's all good. Thank you councillor Bernard, as you know, I've had conversations with the province with regards to this project, and then the traffic being a concern. You're right, we haven't, we haven't got the answer that we've kind of seeked, but doesn't, it certainly doesn't mean we can't still have conversations with them as the project moves forward. So, as early as today, I was speaking to Wayne Walker, who's leading the project, and, you know, he reiterated that they want to continue being a team member, and working together closely with the city, to make sure that this project is the best project it can be, and that includes traffic. So, again, he reassured me that the talks are still going to, are still going to happen, and at some point, we'll probably have to pull in Public Works at some point, but, again, that day is, the day will come soon, and we'll see if we can get the province and the right officials from the city in the same room, and see if there can be a, an agreement hammered out at that point, to see if there is some, a relief valve, if you will, onto the bypass. But I've been reassured that they're, they're very willing to work with the city, and they want to continue that relationship, so.
Appreciate that, yeah, thank you.
Councillor Bernard, I fully agree with you, plus, in the next couple of days, will we not be going, looking at a tender for the pathway along?
Yep.
So, if we're looking at a write-out, we should try to make sure that this is planned together, rather than fill the pathway, and then they do a write-out and go over the pathways, so...
I think even if the pathway's built on, they can still work around it, but I understand what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying?
Nice to do it at the same time.
And I agree, as you've said, there's going to be, there will be a lot of congestion down there, with those 87 units, and they're all trying to get out of Patterson, and they're not going around merchants, hit the lights, that right away, right out and right in has to be...
And everybody in here talks about the amount of traffic, we don't want going through our neighborhoods.
Our neighborhoods.
And this just adds to that, so.
Good point.
Be nice to get some cooperation from the province.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor? That's 10-0.
Your worship, move by councillor Revered, second by councillor Daphne McCarty, that request to amend the developer, sorry, the development concept plan and development agreement pertaining to 45 Towers Road, Lot 2014-4, PID 1076694, be approved, proceed to public consultation.
This is going to a public meeting? Councillor Durham?
I just want to, you know, this, this development has been very, very busy over the last 10 years, and yet, here we are again, I don't know how many times that, you know, we say you can build this because of a development agreement, and I'm told that a development, a development agreement is a living and breathing document. So, like, how many times has this development been changed? You know, some of the residents were sitting here, and they're thinking that, you know, an old age home is going to go in with 90 beds, and, you know, it's going to be a place you could go to an apartment, and then, if you had to go into a home, it'd be right there. So, now, when this comes up to change it again, to another apartment building, I just feel that, you know, the whole idea of this development has gone south, in my opinion, and I'd just like to say, I can't support this, so, thank you.
Your worship, thank you councillor Durham, and, you know, I tend, I agree strongly with councillor Durham on this one. You know, a CDA zone does allow for changes like this, but we're in double digits of seeing this, you know, this property change, and it is unfortunate, because when you, when you bring your initial concept plan to the public, as we see a lot of times in the CDA, you know, the public share their thoughts for a long-term vision.
Lots of meetings.
And when that vision changes 10 times over a six-year span, you know, it becomes very frustrating, and then what was initially proposed, it's, it looks nothing like it.
No.
And that's, and that's unfortunate. Unfortunately, with the CDA, you know, again, they're allowed to come in and make application for a change, but, again, ultimately, it's up to council to say, hey, listen, this is the, this is the vision you chose, this is the vision we approved, and we're going to hold your feet to the fire, or we let them off the hook and change. So, again, it's just a little public meeting, but that's up to council.
Yeah, it's a public consultation.
So, this is just to go to...
Councillor Twill?
So, this is just to go to the public meeting?
That's it. Public consultation. Questions called. Questions called. All those in favor, raise your hands. Nine. All those against? One. Nine-one. Councillor Durham?
Move by councillor Revered, second by councillor Daphne McCarty, that request to amend appendix A of the official plan from medium-density residential to commercial, for the properties at 428 Queen Street, PID 368134, 430 Queen Street, PID 368126, and a portion of 432 Queen Street, PID 368118, and number two, amend appendix G of the zoning and development bylaw, from the medium-density residential R3 zone, to the mixed-use corridor MUC zone, for the property at 428 Queen Street, PID 368134, be approved, proceed to public consultation.
To the public consultation?
Yes, your worship.
It's not immediate, it's coming up.
Questions called.
Question? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. 10-0. Get that, Terry?
Your worship, move by councillor Revered, second by councillor Daphne McCarty, that request to amend appendix A of the official plan, from downtown neighborhood to downtown mixed-use neighborhood, and two, amend appendix G of the zoning and development bylaw, for the downtown neighborhood DN zone, to downtown mixed-use neighborhood DMUN zone, in order to operate a professional office accountants on the first two floors, with the remaining third floor to be used for residential unit at 168 Weymouth Street, PID 345108, be approved, proceed to public consultation.
Another public consultation, okay. Questions called. Questions called. All those in favor? 10-0. Oh, sorry. Nine-one. Councillor Twill opposed.
Your worship, move by councillor Revered, second by councillor Daphne McCarty, that proposed zoning and development bylaw, P8Z2.2, as attached, be approved.
That's it, sir? Okay. What was that again? So, do you want to read that again to him, sir?
Yes, your worship. Thank you, your worship, please.
Councillor Twill, you want, at your binder on number planning 11, you have to go to the back.
I'm at...
You have to go back, and you'll see, you will see the zoning and development bylaw...
Nice question, how come they're not on the screen?
Because we're not plugged in.
COVID-19, 6 feet 2 meters.
No plugs. That's why we get these mics.
And binders.
And what?
And binders.
So, it is, you want to read the sections?
I read them.
Yeah, so, there are amendments to the regulations for mixed-density distribution, regulations for facial sign?
Yep.
General provisions?
Yep.
Oh, good.
The facial signs, your worship, just...
Yeah, general provisions for subdivision, and private street access being appealed. So, we're getting out of the private streets, right?
Yep. So, worship, it's moved by councillor Revered, second by councillor Daphne McCarty, that proposed zoning and development bylaw, P8-Z2.2, as attached, be approved. This is online, your worship. Councillor Packidge and councillor, sorry, Twill has it in his package as well, your worship.
Can I ask a question with the facial sign?
You can ask a question, yeah? Which one?
So, about the facial sign, general provisions, was this discussed at the public meeting at the Rajworldy Inn? It was, wasn't it? So, one of the questions I had that night, of course, the digital signage, and how this relates, or how it corresponds, or adjusts to digital signage. In fact, they even asked about digital signage in the 500 lots, and I think that's what we're talking about primarily, in the 500 lots, if I stand to be corrected. And what is the impact of these changes on digital signage? I know that you're only allowed a certain square footage of a digital signage, yet we have Confederation Center of the Arts, Kensington Theatre's another, I'm not sure what the other one is, but, I mean, these are, these are huge signs that are digital. And how does, what we're going to be doing here tonight, how does it line up? Is there going to be consistency, or is there going to be inconsistency?
Councillor Revered?
When it comes to digital signage, and how it impacts, affects on facial signage, general provisions?
Thank you councillor Twill, unequivocally, consistency.
Yeah, that's right, unequivocally, uncategorically.
So, so the digital sign, it is different, it's a, the digital piece, the signs that you're referring to are a separate part of the bylaw, the facial sign that we're referring to here is simply, if you walk, oh, you've given the perfect example, so, next to the pilothouse, keep or you're building a new building, that new, that new building is to be done, it has the setback, step back on the top, so you have four stories, and then you have the fifth and sixth floor that are, that are stepped back. They had come forward to us, and our bylaw, the way it read, was that the, they had to put the sign either on the second floor or the top of the building, but the, because of the step back, the top of the building, you wouldn't be able to see the sign of the business. So, we're simply saying that, we're recognizing, saying that the top of the building, the fourth floor before the setback, can be considered the top of the building, or the actual top of the building with the setback. That's all this is, this has nothing to do with digital signage?
No digital signs.
No.
Councillor Bernard?
Yeah, I just have a question. The digital sign that's on the yard on Water Street, at the naval base there?
Yes.
Very, very, very bright.
Bright.
And you're coming around the turn, I'm just wondering if our staff, to me, it's beyond the brightness and the blind...
Which signs that?
It's the HMCS Queen Charlotte, the naval barracks.
Okay, so there's...
It's for the family members.
Yeah, so under our bylaw, we do have the illumination, there's certain, there's a certain LED brightness that has to be adhered to, so we can certainly have staff look into that, but it talks about that in the, in the bylaw.
It's well beyond what's allowed, I'm sure.
Yeah, Alice, can you make note of that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Question?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Yeah.
One?
I'm in favor, just, it's a facial, if you don't mind...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Facial signage, so, what you're talking about on...
10-0, crazy.
On drafting?
Yeah.
Yeah, so is that something similar to what you see over here, with the building, used to call the Royal Trust Towers, not sure what it's called, DBC Place, and the signage that's way up, so it's the same deal?
Yep.
So you can see it back about a half mile away.
Yeah, so the reason why, the reason for this one, Counselor Twill, is because if you're on that same side of the sidewalk, walking as the Pilot Houses, and you were trying to find the business, and they weren't able to advertise their business on the top of the fourth floor, then you'd never see what was on top of the six because of the step back, so.
No, I understand that. I understand that. Just looking for an analogy, an accurate one of that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Counsel Reverde. Thanks for the clarity and consistency.
Unequivocally.
Okay. Do you have a bylaw reading for us there, Mr. Kelly?
There are five, Your Worship.
Five.
Your Worship, to adopt a bylaw, P8-Z2.2030, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to rezone the subject property located at 35 Conley Street, PID 358556, from the shopping center Commercial C3 Zone to the mixed-use corridor MUC Zone. Be resolved that the proposed bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, P8Z2.2030, as it pertains to 35 Conley Street, PID 358556, as attached, be read for the first time, move by Counsel Reverde, check by Deputy Mayor Cody.
Charlotte Kerry.
Pass.
Be resolved that the zoning and development amendment bylaw, P8Z2.2030, be approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, move by Counsel Reverde, check by Deputy Mayor Cody.
Charlotte Kerry.
Pass.
Pass.
Your Worship, to adopt bylaw, P8Z2.2031, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to rezone the subject property located at 40 to 42 Kensington Road, 3 Park Street, PID 365676, from the low-density residential R2 Zone to the medium-density residential R3 Zone. Be resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, P8Z2.2031, as it pertains to 40 to 42 Kensington Road and 3 Park Street, PID 365676, as attached, be read for the first time, move by Counsel Reverde, check by Deputy Mayor Cody.
Charlotte Kerry.
Pass.
Pass.
Be resolved that the zoning and development bylaw amendment, sorry, amendment bylaw, P8Z2.2031, be approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, move by Counsel Reverde, check by Deputy Mayor Cody.
And Charlotte Kerry.
Pass.
Your Worship, to adopt bylaw, P8Z2.2032, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to amend the development concept plan and development agreement to increase the density from 60 to 62 units as it pertains to 53 Towers Road, Lot 2014-5, PID 1076702. Be resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, P8Z2, sorry, P8ZD.2032, as it pertains to 53 Towers Road, Lot 2014-5, which is PID 1076702, as attached, be read for the first time, move by Counsel Reverde, check by Deputy Mayor Cody.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Be resolved that the zoning and development amendment, P8-ZD.2032, be approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, move by Counsel Reverde, check by Deputy Mayor Cody.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Ten-zero.
Your Worship, to adopt bylaw, P8ZD.2033, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to amend sections of the zoning and development bylaw, P8ZD.2 pertaining to section 20, medium-density mixed-use MUR zone, mixed formula for housing types to allow for better placement of similar dwellings. Section 45.2, private street access being removed and repealed. Number three, section 45.6, general provisions for the subdivision pertaining to private roads, and section 44.12.4, regulations for the facial sign, general provisions to allow facial signage to be located at the top of a four-story street wall or the top of the building impacted by a steep bank, or back, sorry. Be resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, P8ZD.2033, as it pertains to the zoning and development amendment, as attached, be read the first time, move by Counsel Reverde, second by Deputy Mayor Cody.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Be resolved that the zoning and development amendment bylaw, P8ZD.2033, be approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, move by Counsel Reverde, check by Deputy Mayor Cody.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Ten-zero.
Your Worship?
Yes, sir.
To adopt bylaw, P8-Z2, sorry, ZD.2035, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to rezone the subject properties located at 115 Murchison Lane, PID 425892 and 691162, from the industrial I zone and business park industrial M3 zone to comprehensive area CDA zone. Be resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, P8ZD.2035, as it pertains to 115 Murchison Lane, PID 425892 and 691162, as attached, be read for the first time, move by Counsel Reverde, check by Deputy Mayor Cody.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Ten-zero.
Be resolved that the zoning and development amendment bylaw, P8ZD.2035, be approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, move by Counsel Reverde, check by Deputy Mayor Cody.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Ten-zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Counsel Reverde. So we'll move on to the next item, which is water and sewer.
Thank you, Your Worship. Our committee met, the report is in your package. Staff continue to keep working on projects with the utility, and I just want to remind council that the fall hydrant flushing is going to be starting very soon, maybe even tomorrow, maybe start today, so just a reminder of that. There's no resolution, Your Worship, if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Any questions? Counsel Bernard?
No.
No questions?
Actually, I do, I do.
Any questions? Retailer wholesale?
Thank you, Counsel Reverde, for your report.
Back in here.
So, in years past, we've had some properties that because of the, I'm not so sure as much as the fire hydrant system is or water system, but, you know, backfiling to people's basements, so, it just reminded me to ask the question, so, do we have a record of those properties, and could we give them a heads up when it comes time to do the flush underground? Because a lot of them are, I mean, it comes, the check valve isn't there maybe, or it's really not the city's problem, but it would be nice to kind of follow up with those residents and make sure before we do it, just so we don't have to spend a lot of time going in and, you know, researching what the problem was.
Yeah, I can, I can check with the manager and see. I'm not sure what the practice is, but I can, I can ask the manager and let you know.
Good, thank you.
Counsel Bernard?
Counsel Reverde, I'm just wondering, can you or the manager give us an update on where we are with the hookups with Stratford's wastewater?
I can ask the manager, I think he's in consultations with the province in Stratford.
Your Worship, what I understood from the media, Stratford had their city council meeting and their director updated them that they're now anticipating being ready to do tests on the law in the end of October.
Yeah, that's right.
So the end of October, their pumping station should be ready to send water to the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, but they'll keep the lagoon open, right? Correct?
Well, the lagoon would be available to them for...
As a backup.
Yep, for at least the initial month for testing.
Or longer, yeah.
And the upgrades at our treatment plant now, what's that scheduled?
Upgrades?
At the wastewater treatment plant, we are ready for the flows at the wastewater treatment plant.
Bring it on.
I noticed land movement there now.
Let's bring in Cornwall, too.
Yep, so we're still doing work on the primary clarifier to help manage with large storm events and into the future, but we can accept the flow from Stratford now.
Right on.
Yeah. This is the first test before the last, right, Richard?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Public Works?
Thank you, Your Worship.
Counsel Delphi?
Thank you. Your Worship, members of council, Public Works and Urban Viewification Committee met on August 26th of 2020. City Board for Pension Persons with Disabilities met on August 11th, 2020. First item on the agenda was traffic control pilot project. As we're all aware, we have speed bumps and signage to slow traffic down primarily on our residential streets. We're about to add another facet to that, and these are called traffic calming curbs to this inventory. Traffic calming curbs are portable concrete curbs that can be quickly deployed individually or in groups. The purpose of them is to reduce pedestrian crossing distances, narrowing driving lanes, service pedestrian refuges, to delineate traffic and to separate driving lanes from active transportation lanes. These lanes can be used to assess the impact effect of the road modification prior to the installation of permanent structures. The dimensions of these curbs is about 150 millimeters high, 2.75 meters long, and one meter wide. The forms incorporate drainage channels and Kelspar post mounts to allow posts to be inserted. As far as considering these items for use in a particular area, it would involve an evaluation of the effectiveness of these devices, and also would involve a traffic study as well as field observations to determine the change, if any, in traffic characteristics. Common benefits of the traffic calming curbs are reduce vehicle speeds and increase stop sign compliance. Based on the effectiveness of the traffic calming curbs, permanent solutions may be recommended should it be determined that the traffic calming measure was effective and had positive impacts on traffic operations. The costs for these particular articles are, the department has received a cost estimate, and they are manufactured locally. The initial cost is $2,900 to construct a moat, and then based on an order of 20 units, the cost per unit is $750. Public Works and Urban Viewification Committee is recommending that the department purchase 20 traffic calming curbs to be deployed at various occasions in the city, and to study the effectiveness of reducing speeds and improving safety for pedestrians. So basically what it does, it just reconfigures the streetscape with the hopes of narrowing up, which in turn will cause motor vehicles to not trail at such a high rate of speed. Next on the agenda at our meeting was future design work. It's all there in your package before you. There's four basic projects that the department would like to get, to go ahead to undertake. The first is East Gateway Project, down, of course, the eastern end of the city, where we'll be, the province will be putting a roundabout in at the foot of the bridge, and the city will be moving Water Street along to behind the Maritime Electric Buildings and go up towards Grafton Street with Water Street, between the Maritime Electric Buildings and the event grounds, and tap into Water Street at that point, about the area where the Gateway Dental Clinic is, and then you'll be on your way on Grafton Street to make your selection at the road tree. That's the first one. Second one is a little difference, the Joe Gis area, Joe Gis Park area, it's stormwater management. This is similar to the other box culverts we had and were working on at the Beach Grove Road and Capital Drive, but in this particular case here, the engineers have looked for the existing channels and culverts and whatever that carries the water from that area out to the Hillsborough River. The network, they couldn't seem to follow where the network got them to the Hillsborough River, so the frustration, they just abandoned the line and are going to construct a new line. So it's eventually going to do the job, but it's just not going to be repaired along the way as they are doing on Capital Drive and, Capital Drive and East Grove. The last two items that the department wants to do design work on is Capital Drive Active Transportation Pathway, which is up around the Palladium, and some work in order to accommodate and provide services for the people on the pathway further down, what we call the Peter Pan Corner, some more work to be done there to improve the Active Transportation Pathway along that area. Those are the four areas that design work would be appreciated be approved. The last two items I have on the agenda here, one resolution for police vehicles this evening, and a final note, that the new road construction, that's the Linky Road between Towers and Spencer Drive, just want to be advised that this time, at this time, the land is still privately owned by Mr. Banks, and is anticipated to be transferred to the city in the coming weeks, if it hasn't already been done so, or hasn't already happened. Once transferred to the city, we will bring a resolution to, for award of work to bring it up to standard. We've gotten a few complaints in the last month or six weeks that there's some potholes there that the present owner keeps putting gravel into, and we know how long that lasts, not very long, but we're not about to undertake any work on that Linky Road until we have proper papers signed. So if any questions, if I can't answer them, Mr. Adams is here to help us out.
Mr. Adams is here, and Counsel McCabe, and then Counsel Ramsey, and then Counsel Reverde.
Thank you for your report, Counsel Delphi. I'm excited to see that we're looking at the pilot project for some further calming curbs to slow down our traffic. We know it's an issue everywhere. I guess I'm looking at, has the criteria for these roads that will be identified been established yet? I'm thinking of Alina Court with the new policy we just passed, you know, dead-end streets don't qualify for speed bumps and stuff. Would that be a road where we could look, there's 1,500 cars traveling that street, it's not even a road, that street every day? Is that a street that would meet the criteria for this new study?
It's going to be an operational issue, so I'll hand it over to Mr. Adams.
So we're, as this is a new project, we're still in development of that criteria, so we'll be looking at that and modifying it. So that will be coming forward as we go through the process of buying it, so it'll all be packaged as one, so it will be coming.
So just looking at the streets that might not qualify for the speed bumps for and stuff, could that be something that you could consider when you're looking at criteria for this?
Yeah, Your Worship, we could look at that part of it.
Thank you.
Counsel Ramsey. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel Duffy. Your last statement there, I think answered my question. I had a lot of complaints too about that road behind Towers where it's coming from Canadian Tire. It's in bad shape, plus there's an awful lot of cars just going right through, like someone's going to be injured, but I think once we find out if we own it, then we can do work to it, so I thank you for that. That was my question. Could you answer it?
Counsel Reverde.
Thank you, Your Worship, thank you, Counsel Duffy, for your report. Kudos to you and the department for looking into these. I mean, it's again, it's one of the biggest complaints we get here every month, and, you know, to not ignore it is a great thing, and these portable concrete calming curbs seem, I'm interested. Following up on Counsel McCabe's question, though, we talk about criteria, can we ensure or try our best to make sure that, you know, when we do identify streets around Charlestown, that, you know, that there's, these calming curbs are put into, to every ward to kind of gauge, you know, the problem areas, if you will, or if they work or not. It'd just be nice if they were kind of scattered all around different areas, because again, in all our wards, we get complaints about traffic and speeding, and I certainly don't want to put speed bumps down everywhere, so if this is an alternative and, again, a great method, then, you know, I'm excited about it, but it'd be nice to make sure that they're scattered around no matter what the criteria is.
I think Counsel Reverde, you're actually right. I think Counsel Reverde, one major advantage of this is, is it's not installing something permanently and hoping that it works. This, you know, the major advantage I see or the asset that this is, is we can install it on a temporary basis, and once we find out that the configuration works and reaches to the goals we want to get to, then we can remove it and put in permanent structure.
Correct.
And I think it'd be a money saver, it'd be more practical.
Good idea. Counsel Bernard? And then Counsel Bernard and Counsel McLeod.
I just have two quick questions. Counsel McLeod touched on it earlier today, for design work, like, is older design work filed in a, you know, a file that we're going to get to, or is it, you know, the design work is out, the residents get excited, and then, you know, whether it's a change of direction from the committee or what, we don't get back to it? So, you know, if we spent the cost for this design work at one time, I'm just wondering, are we going back to it to get this work done?
Counsel Duffy?
Travis, do you want to pick that, or do you want Mr. Adams?
Yes, Your Worship, so when design work is done, we always own it, so if the priorities of council do change, we still have that design that we can pull off the shelf and put that back out to tender. So, design's always there if it's been designed, it's just based on when it's, what's the priority of the committees at that time. So we, I'm assuming probably ditching building, things like that. We have some of those streets already designed, and if it's something that we do in the future, then those designs are already to go, so it's a cost that we have already incurred, and we won't have to incur it again.
Perfect. It's just the second question? Yeah, just the second question on this one, and I have another one.
Oh, sure.
It was sidewalks. So if the sidewalks, you know, we deemed were good a couple of years ago, and then other things came into play, like Capital Drive or something, some big project, but we didn't have the money. The problem, I'm, well, it's not a problem, but I'm hoping that we can go back to that design work and get that work completed. My second question, and it's about the new road construction, so if we do a road, we all know that that road at Towers... So if we do a road, we all know that that road at Towers, you know, I know I've hit it myself, potholes. Would we just be paving over that or would we be ripping it up if it becomes ours?
Reconstruction.
Your worship, so the design is, the asphalt's completely removed. We do fix up the roadbed. We're bringing it up to quote unquote, highway grade. So the asphalt will be the proper thickness, two lifts the base, one lift to seal. There will be concrete curb and gutter along the mall side property line to divide the road up. So yes, it will be completely renovated and rebuilt, yes.
So it would be a little more expensive than the $22 a meter.
Yes.
Okay, okay. No, I just want, thank you.
Counselor Bernard.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I don't think, I'm not sure.
A little more expensive.
Counselor Bernard.
Depends what the project is.
Yeah, okay.
Just a couple of questions, Counselor Duffy. First one is just on the Eastern Gateway project. I mentioned that the province is moving ahead with the roundabout for Grafton Riverside Drive, so I guess they're asking us to realign part of that Eastern Gateway project, Water Street coming up to Fitz, Fitz right? So what I'm wondering is.
Water Street coming up to Grafton?
Grafton, sorry. What I'm wondering is what happens at that intersection where when they reconvert water up to Grafton? Is it a roundabout that the city's putting in or is there some lights?
Oh, oh, yes. Go ahead.
Your worship, so I assume, are you talking about the intersection at the bypass and the Hillsborough Bridge and Grafton? Is that the intersection or the one where?
No, the problems is moving ahead, that's their jurisdiction.
Right, right.
Okay.
Oh, the Grafton Street and New Water Street.
Water and Grafton. So what I'm afraid of Scott is you have people come down Water Street now and they just exit on the bridge, there's no stopping, keep going. Now we're going to reconvert it to an intersection, so no doubt Water Street's going to back way up because right now when you're coming on the bypass highway to get across the bridge, that's backed up to God, the second roundabout.
Right.
So I'm just wondering, has anybody, before we go and do this, are we having a traffic consultant or someone look at it and say, okay, here's what you expect for traffic delays?
Ex.
Because I think, and I know that the Eastern Gateway plan wants to reroute that, but I'm just wondering what kind of traffic lights or roundabout or whatever, what the delays are going to be and how that's going to impact stacking all the way back. It's going to go right back to Queen Street or do we know?
Your worship, so that will be part of the whole, when we go out to RFP for consultant services, that would be part of the work that they'll have to look at. I think proposed right now, it is a roundabout at that intersection with the Water Street extension, Grafton Street, but no, we will make sure that there is a traffic study component of that to determine what is the best option for that configuration because yes, it will change the flow of traffic, but the roundabout as well at the Hillcar Bridge will change as well. So there'd be, so we'd want to model that and see how, what they anticipate it's going to look like at the end of the day.
Perfect, perfect. My other question Scott was, and I know it's a provincial project, they're working on St. Peters Road and Riverside Drive now with the bypass highway now. Projects moving ahead very good, very little delays, but I'm hearing now that they're also going to add a component on Kensington Road. So the people coming downhill or heading east to go back into Parkwood Estates Mini Home Park, they have a left turning stall now. So when you're coming out of Parkwood Estates right now, you can only go left or right, can't go straight. So now what I'm hearing is the problem's going to eliminate the left-hand turn to turn into their subdivision. And also on Kensington Road, they're also going to eliminate, so if they're coming up Kensington Road, so if they're coming from the track or food land or whatever, they can't go straight across the intersection to get home. They got to go left or right. So what I'm wondering is if I'm coming home and I can't turn left into Parkwood Estates, how do I get home? Am I going to go up to the next intersection, do a Uwi and come back down so I can turn right? Or do you know what the final plan is? Have you had any updates?
So your worship, the last plan we received is, as you mentioned, they have, coming out of Parkwood Estates, you will only be able to.
Right out.
You can go right or left, but going in, it's only a right in. So they have it set up, so you have to be coming from the hospital direction to turn in, which is very limiting to traffic trying to get into that facility. They do not have, they have not proposed any other option for people getting into the area. There have been discussions, but at this point, they have not proposed anything concrete.
So is it true then that if they're coming up Kensington Road, that that will be blocked off to go straight and that will be a right or a left home?
That is correct.
So I assume Kensington Road is their street, not ours?
Pardon me?
Kensington Road.
Yeah.
That is the province's street?
No, the intersection is theirs, but Kensington Road is the city's.
Okay. The intersection is theirs, which gives them the right to, okay. So, and I know again, it's a provincial project, so as far as you know, that's where they're going with it, but, because I don't think anybody in Parkwood Estates really knows what's going on, it's just rooms over here.
Right.
So the latest update you have is that they can't turn left to turn into the subdivision. They can't go straight off Kensington Road, so they're going to have to drive to the hospital or whatever, turn around and come all the way back.
As the last drawing that we received is, that's correct.
Wow, okay. Thanks.
Yeah. So Scott, do they take the lights out?
The lights will still remain because traffic will be coming off Kensington Road and being able to go left to head towards St. Peters Road.
Oh, I thought it was going to be right off.
No, no, Kensington Road will stay the same as it is right now if you're coming off Kensington Road.
Can they go across to Parkwood Estates?
Nope.
But you can.
But you can now, that's correct.
That's right.
Yeah, that's a big change.
They're removing that and they're removing the turn lane to turn in.
Yeah.
But keeping the lights, okay.
So two out of three ways home is going to be eliminated.
This perplexed local worship, it's not constipation. I'm really confused on why we're doing this. What's the reasoning as to?
Well, this is the province.
No, I get it.
I just want to know your feedback.
No, no, I know, I'm just, I'd love to know what the province is reasoning. Because again, if you're coming home, I'm just trying to think for those residents, they're not residents of mine, but still residents of Charlestown, I mean, you'd have to, I'm just trying to in my mind map it out where you'd go to turn out to get home.
It's all right.
It doesn't make a whole lot of sense and I guess I can see a lot of people turning into people's driveways to turn, to get back out to the bypass if, unless you want to go down to one of the roundabouts down by the Energy Corporation and then go around there, but that just seems like a lot of.
Yeah, but I think Scott has already been told that they might even look at an entrance off West Combe into Parkwood Estates, correct?
That was discussed a while ago, but I believe that was off the table.
Counselor McLeod.
Thank you very much, Counselor Duffy, thanks for your report. Just getting back to the, to the traffic calming scenarios.
Thanks, Scott.
The big question here guys, just not to forget, is that Chief Paul Smith and Police and Council of Intelligence Committee, they came forward here with a pretty good explanation of what community policing is looking like and where we have to go. And I think it's important we don't forget that these are just, you know, Band-Aids to what our big picture is and that is that we do need to find money somewhere to create a traffic division. I don't think we want to forget that. I don't think there's a community in Charlestown, whether it's east, west, north, south, that isn't complaining to a traffic rate. So let's get that out of our hearts and come budget time. That's the real answer to traffic. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Duffy, you want to go to Counselor Brown?
One more question, is he yes or no? Counselor Duffy, with all these new roundabouts coming in, I don't know whether it's from the province or not, or is there any talk whatsoever about the Belvedere intersection at all? Is that on the?
We're ready to go. We're ready to go. The province doesn't appear to be, unless Mr. Adams has something to add to.
As of right now, no, but we will be having discussions with them shortly on the matter.
Perfect. Thank you very much. What's the problem with it? Do they not see it as a priority?
Your worship, I believe it's just the funding.
Because it's in the city?
Yeah, I believe it's the funding models. I think the past city has been waiting for some infrastructure funding that hasn't been, hasn't come and so that's been, it's the funding, where the funding's coming from.
You can't give a COVID-19 argument for it?
Your worship, it seems kind of be a spreader too. Like if you're traveling and you're planning to go somewhere east of, I don't know, Gordon Drive or somewhere, Suffolk for example, or are you going to go to the airport or whatever, rather than going down to that corner, most people take Ellis Road or something else that will fit Duncan Heights or something that'll feed you away from that particular, so it kind of spreads the traffic out a bit, but it's kind of inconvenient.
Yeah, that's good for the locals, but tourists, they just get caught in that and you see them. Counselor Yankoff.
On a totally different note, and I should know the answer to this because I'm on Vice Chair of your committee, but I don't believe anything came up in that, but I've gotten a call from a resident who has indicated that the, that that tunnel past UPEI is moving forward and I wonder, do you have any update or on that?
I do not. I do not.
Can I ask the manager?
Other than what we had at committee.
Yeah.
Mr. Adams, can you enlighten us?
Your worship, at this moment, there's no movement. There's been talks about potentially funding stream for it from the province, but there's been no movement from Public Works at this moment.
Okay.
And they are looking at a pedestrian underpass for St. Peters Road, correct?
A pedestrian underpass?
Yeah.
Just where the bridge is, where the water, I wish you were Andrew's pump.
Yeah.
So as part of the bridge replacement, the province will be putting in a.
A box culvert. Yeah. Counselor McCabe.
Well, we're talking intersections, I guess I should get a follow-up on the Bunsen Things, Ellis Brothers intersection. Does anybody have a chance to look at that, considering if there's been residents hit and?
We, your worship, yeah, we have, we're starting to look at that intersection and a potential option for it would be the traffic calming, the concrete barrier traffic calming was one option we could look at, so we have explored it.
Okay, thank you.
So we got a couple of resolutions there, Mr. Kelly?
One, by Counselor Duffy, second by Counselor Yankoff, that per the conditions of the request for quotations on 2020 police vehicle purchases in respect to three full or mid-sized sedans, the submission of Centennial Nissan of Charlestown in the amount of $79,924 plus all applicable taxes be accepted. And that as per the conditions of the request for quotations on 2020 police vehicle purchases in respect to one half-ton four-by-four crew cab truck, the submission of reliable motors limited in the amount of $41,824 plus all applicable taxes be accepted.
She's two for two. I'm hearing from some of Zad Grester.
Yeah.
Questions?
Questions called.
Questions called. All in favor, raise your hands. Ten, zero. Is that it there, Counselor?
That's it, thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Economic Development, get their voice, Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you, your worship. Economic Development, Tourism, Advanced Management Committee met August 24th and Minister in your package. The Charlestown Eric's Advisory Board met August 25th and the Minister in your package. I have no resolutions, but a couple of thoughts here, your worship. The city last week hosted the Events Atlantic Summer Board Meeting here in August. It was a three-day event and laid up the groundwork to advance sectors and all that and I was very pleased to be involved with that. The CPL Soccer League is in its final week of action as the championship rounds are starting this weekend. It's hard to believe when they got here that it's almost coming to an end. Myself and Mr. Long were there again this past Saturday, it was well-attended, fantastic game and all that, so, and the league has, it's been a real success and Charlestown, it's a real feather in our cap for hosting this, you know, because everything, as you read in the paper today by the league commissioner, he's very pleased that there's no issues or anything along that line. The City Cinema Under the Stars event went with partnership with the Confederation Center of the Earth, was a welcome addition this year and we have had over 800 people attending to it. That was an outdoor concert there that we started. Earth in the Open was also recently held and proved to be another banner year, congratulations to the organizers. Plus, the 10th Annual Mayor's Cup happened last week and I would personally like to thank Wayne, Laurel, Charlotte and Jill for all the work that they did behind the scenes for that, as Mike and I and Terry and I believe Greg was there, yes, Greg was there, the star. We were there and everything just fell into place. It's a little bit of showers at the first, but you clear it up and everyone who was there had a great time.
And don't forget Aaron Hansen and the committee.
That's correct.
Just a big shout out to them for all the work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But our staff did an awful lot of work behind the scenes and had everything rolling smooth as we all got to test.
So who won the cup?
The World Under 17 Hockey Team.
So that was Rob Hosen?
Ryan Power.
Brody Keith.
Brody Keith.
And Cameron?
Cameron.
Cameron, yeah. Not your son-in-law, the other guy.
What was the final, what was the final tally for money raised?
I think it was 63, was it correct?
Thirty-two thousand.
Oh, yes.
Thirty-two thousand.
And last year?
I like your answer better, 63.
I don't know, I thought you meant the score.
What was it last year's, Wayne?
Let's take the cheating into consideration.
What was it last year, 36,000?
Similar, your worship. I don't have the number in front of me. I know that it's similar, but the committee was quite pleased given the challenges that was with COVID.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're very pleased, like the whole thing went off, it hitched and it's all for stars for late, so things went very well. Yeah. So thanks again to people.
Counselor Duffy, do you have a question for Counselor Ramsey from Ward 5?
Thank you, Counselor Ramsey. Counselor Ramsey, you recall back on June 25th in this chamber here that we passed a resolution in regards to the Sir John A. McDonald statue.
Correct.
I was moved by myself and seconded by Counselor McLeod. That resolution had two aspects to it. One, we saw that we passed this resolution and the other was asked off to your subcommittee to look after, which you have been doing. The first part of it is that it basically said that the city of Charlestown, I'm sorry, the city council endorses the status of the Sir John A. McDonald, the statue of Sir John A. McDonald remain in place and further. So we took after the, looked after the business of was he going to be moved or taken away or stay where he is? We looked after that as a council that night. Then the second part, of course, this has to do with the plaque and approaching three of the people, the groups who have knowledge and to put on to the new plaque that we're going to place and that's where your committee came in. So on, having said all that, on Friday morning, I was down the Bar Rock very early and I was listening to the news from Halifax and there was a lady coming in from Scottford to speak, or she had been in town and she was talking about this very, very topic here. And when that presentation was over, the announcer said, and the subcommittee is looking for an alternate place for Sir John A. McDonald. So I said, that's not right. We had already looked after that, he's not going anywhere. So I don't know who contacted the CBC and gave them that script to read, but it kind of upset me because we just settled this, this whole issue and settled it by a 10 to 0 vote, only to have it rise up again. Anyway, the second part, which is the information on the plaque, city council advised that you would contact three different groups to bring information that would be considered to be put on the plaque. I'm led to believe that two of the groups you had talked to and those two groups didn't see a need to talk to the third group, so you hadn't talked to the third group yet, but I'm here to tell you that city council said you will talk, so you should have those people in and talk because it's in, sorry, in the resolution, their name, so.
Yeah.
I was really perturbed to hear that, here we go again with another round of Sir John A. McDonald, when we had specifically said he's staying where he is. And thank you very much for your work on this.
No, no, thank you for that because I know there's nobody like from our group and we all voted here that night that Sir John A. is staying and that they, and we were working with the other two groups, they were going back to their elders and we were doing a term of reference and all that and they were supposed to get back to us, so this thing is not done yet.
It's fervent over.
Like it's fervent and done. And as far as the third group, we heard other issues about it, but we are going to be reaching out to them and see what's going on. But as far as we all know, sitting in this room, Sir John A. is staying and where CBC got their news, who knows?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it's the chiefs they have to go back to.
Excuse me?
The chiefs of Old Way and the Mi'kmaq Confederacy.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, the elders are all trying to look at this also.
Good. No need to get upset that night.
No.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any, any other questions?
Yep.
Oh, Counsel Bernard?
I'm just reading the minutes here. It does say that the, the process was paused by the Mi'kmaq Confederacy PEI and Newy representatives until I-28th while the awake direction from the First Nations Chiefs.
Yeah.
And I think this is from Laurel. It also says that the statue would stay. So I don't know if there's miscommunication or whatever, but I think as Counsel Duffy said, it was a solid 10, nothing vote. The, the statue is not moving. My understanding was the consultation was for what was on the plaque to give both sides of the history. So I assume, Counsel, that that's what you're meaning.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Thank you.
Counsel Yankov?
Just to clarify and maybe correct me if I'm wrong. I think the consultation wasn't just about what to put on the plaque. I think it, it was also about what other options could be done as the statue was staying. So it wasn't just about the plaque. Or am I wrong, Counselor Ramsey? Because there was more discussions in that meeting than just plaque. There was talks of other pieces of art. There was other.
That's something that, yes, that those groups were looking for, like in the future, that maybe we can put other earth around and all that stuff. Yes, but, but for this topic alone, it was only that the statue is staying and the two groups that were in were in full agreement of that. As you were there, I think that meeting. I'll leave the statue there.
And it was just about a plaque. They were going to meet to see what was on the plaque. That's what's in the resolution.
Yeah, there's the terms of reference when it to all those people also.
I can read what, what was in the resolution. It says that the city bring the appropriate stakeholders together to determine best steps forward so to recognize that the full story be told and in particular involve the three groups to ensure direct input to bring resolve.
That's more than just leaving the statue and designing it.
Sorry?
That would be opening discussion with the groups to see what, I would interpret that resolution to be opening a discussion with the three groups to.
Recognize the full story.
Yep, exactly. Open discussion.
In our comps department, he's working with their comps department. So we have everything right and we're in right, if we want, but everything still got to come back to council.
Everything, everything comes back to council. Open, transparent and accountable. Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Ramsey, any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Reverend.
Counsel McLeod?
Thank you very much, your worship.
More to.
There she is. The Environment Sustainability Committee met on September the ninth and draft minutes are included in the package. The mayor's tax force on active transportation met on the ninth as well. Those minutes are not in the package. Didn't make the cut up. Charlestown Pool Council has not met since the last meeting. There are no resolutions for your consideration, but we do have a few highlights. The talkable transit, the monthly transit ridership for August 2020 was 34,721 compared to August of last year it was 58,377. So things are improving as we try to get back to normal. There are positive signs. The current transfer ridership during COVID restrictions is, is holding steady at over 59%. So, so, you know, given the hardship, things are moving along. They're not too bad. The city also is having their 7th annual Business Tree Challenge, which will be held in the parkland behind the West Rowdy Community Center with support from the Ellen's Creek Ridership Group. This event will take place Wednesday, September 24th from nine until 2:30. Five businesses have signed up to participate. Investco, Uptree, Sable Arc, McGinnis Cooper, Enviro Vector businesses to participate by planting trees to offset their paper use. So good story all the way around and hopefully we can do better and that too for other communities as well. The community tree planting event is being held at the Frank McCauley Park on September 19th. That's this coming Saturday at 9:30. The event is open to the general public, but pre-registration due to COVID is required. This event is funded through TD Tree Days and Everyday Foundation. And the planning will enhance the natural features of the park and put a finishing touches to our, to this project that began in 2019 on improving the swale and stormwater management in the park. So you can visit the website to sign up for this coming Saturday. Hope to see some of you there. If you just can make it stop in for a few minutes, it'd be great. We also came late, so the committee didn't get to, get to here yet, but just a little tidbit of information, TD is also giving us some money for initiative at the Bomber Callahan Park to tree planting shrub project as well. So that'll be coming up in October. So we'll be moving forward on that one as well. And the Environment Sustainability Committee continues to review updates on the city's emergency performance contract. City managers and staff have met with Honeywell in August to review the energy products that are currently being investigated for the potential to reduce energy use, greenhouse gas emissions and energy costs. So the final recommendations will be coming up here in October. So good things happening all the way around, especially with the environment. So that'll, any questions?
Counsel Prong, sorry, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your report, Counsel McLeod. I just see in the new business there that the, an application was approved for 27 level two stations, 18 of which will be installed in Charlestown. Would that be like, could one ward like get, get one? Like, did you look at where there's going to be?
We haven't gone that far yet. There's a lot based on the, you know, where are people going to be and, you know, how long will these charges and will take the charge card? You know, so you need to have convenient places so that people can do some shopping, that type of thing as well, right? But, but we did do a, a ridership there with Tesla here this past few days.
Yeah.
Alan and I, the mayor managed to do it. He's versatile, but we couldn't make the golf. We couldn't make the golf. We were too busy test driving this electric car and Alan and I. So anyway, it was, it was quite, quite an eye opener, I'll tell you. And if you just get a chance ever to be around. So we're moving forward with an application and with, with some other communities and Mayor Tom Ettich. And when we get that finalized, then we'll sit down as a, as a hall here and figure out where we want to put them.
Thank you.
Counsel Prong, thanks to Minister Myers because it was his department that organized the, the event and the Tesla, it's a beautiful car. Counsel Yankov, did you drive one?
Did you get an opportunity to drive or was there an issue with your driver's license?
Yeah, there was an issue with my driver's license. I knew you'd asked that. See, we're live streamed. Yeah. Yes, they did expire. So we had to go and pick up Lori. And Lori drove the car. So yes, my license had been renewed. She said, can I read your number? I said, let me write it down for you. No, I have to look at it.
One little tidbit of information there, you know, when you're driving with, with, with them, there's quite an education component comes with this and they're willing to come here someday too to even do one for us. They're out of Halifax. So it'd be really nice to do, but, but the car is, this one was, you know, it was a pretty nice car and it was $55,000. But, you know, when you compare with a Honda or something of reasonably the same sized car, over the years of the lifespan of the car, actually it becomes cheaper to operate because there isn't, you don't go through the brakes. You don't, there's no oil changes, you know, there's none of that kind of stuff. So it was kind of quite interesting to hear like how far the, the electric car.
And no fuel wise, so?
And no fuel. So it seemed expensive for the side, you know, but ton of storage space in it. Alan and I get pretty cozy in there.
Who drove?
Actually, I was with Ramona actually, and I was so impressed with the way he was driving. I said, Ramona, you better drive this car. So we switched.
Yeah, you were watching Netflix.
We shared.
Oh, I know there's a nice big screen.
But anyway, thank you very much.
Yeah, it was a very, you know what, Cara McKenzie is with the Clean Foundation and she had some great ideas about where the charging stations should go. So I did follow up with Ramona and they're willing to partner with us to, you know, help us implement these charging stations. A great, great presentation. So thanks to Minister, the department and Ramona, thank you.
Thank you, Ramona.
Shout it out to CAA too as well.
And CAA, thank you very much. Canadian Automobile Association. So do you have a resolution?
No resolution.
Any questions? Such a positive report, what are we going to ask?
Very well nailed it.
Nailed her. Okay. Thank you, Ramona.
Thank you. So the strategic priorities and intergovernmental cooperation committee met on Thursday, September 3rd. Minutes are in your package. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee did not meet since the last council meeting nor did they use engagement. There are no resolutions for your consideration, but I will do my best to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Counsel Rivera?
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Counsel Yankov. I forgot that I was going to ask you a question. I almost skipped by it. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, have we established a terms of reference for them yet? Because I'm trying, I'm trying to determine what the mandate is of this committee. You know, we, we haven't heard anything with regards to input from, from this committee or new ideas or suggestions or anything. And I know Alex sits on the board, but again, we, nothing has come through, through planning with respect to, you know, what can we do, new ideas, new initiatives? Again, I just don't know what the, the terms of reference or the mandate of this committee is.
So as far as I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kelly, they haven't yet confirmed their terms of reference. Is that correct? And this is as long as, as well as the other committees, I think are all coming up for review under Council Advisory and the, in the coming months. So I don't have anything wrong.
No, no, no. Thank you, Counsel Yankov. It's not, it certainly wasn't a question to put you on the spot or, or an expectation. Just, I guess I'm a little perplexed as to, you know, we're, we're almost at year two in our term. Then we've established these committees. And, and again, they do get a stipend for, for coming to the meetings of $100. I just, again, when you don't have a terms of reference and you get nothing from them, I certainly question the value. And again, I don't want to dismiss the work they do either, but without, without getting any information, it's really hard to, to justify, I guess, if you will. So I'll wait for the review and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Counsel Yankov. Moving on to finance audit, tenders, property.
Thank you, your worship.
Everything else?
Your worship, we had a special meeting on August 24th, really to go over some, some tenders that are in the package tonight. We do have a meeting tomorrow because there's a lot of tenders that were closing and weren't able to be ready for the package tonight. So we'll be meeting again tomorrow. There's a number of more I just to go over. What else? The quarterly financial statements, that will start next, next month. It'll be going in the package next month. So your worship, I, we don't have any resolutions, but certainly do my best to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions? Okay. So the quarterly statements next month, right?
Pardon?
We're getting the quarterly statements next month?
They'll start next month, yeah.
And the audit, how's the audit going? The audit?
I believe it just started, did it not, Mark?
Yeah. So they've been here for a little over a week. They weren't here today. They'll be here the rest of this week and hopefully finish up field work next week.
Thank you, Counsel Prong. Counsel McAbe?
Thank you, your worship. The Human Resources Communications and Administration Committee met on August the 26th. The minutes are included in your package. We are going to renew the resolution that we were going to bring up tonight, but we will have the first reading for our amended code of conduct. And I just want to say thank you very much to all of council for taking the time on Saturday to come in and really go through that and make sure that it was clear and amended so that it made a little bit more sense for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McAbe. We're putting together the meeting and I think it was quite successful. Counsel Prong?
Thank, thank you for your report, Counsel McAbe. I'm just, I have a few questions regarding the code of conduct bylaw. You know, I know we went through it and I still didn't get satisfaction of answers on my questions. So.
Counsel Prong, do you want to wait for the resolution to move? Like we're going to move the resolution and then, and then, then it's open to discussion? Okay. Is that all right?
I asked a question.
Yeah, okay. Do you want to read it there, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, your worship. The City of Charlestown Code of Conduct Bylaw 2020 CC01, to repeal the City of Charlestown Council Code of Conduct 2018-15, which was approved and adopted December 4th, 2018, amended February 11th, 2019 and March 6th, 2019, and replace it with the attached Council Code of Conduct Bylaw 2020 CC01. Be resolved that the attached bylaw, the City of Charlestown Council Code of Conduct Bylaw 2020 CC01 be read for the first time. Your worship, move with Counsel Duffey, second by Counsel, by Counsel Yankov.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Now this is where we open it up, correct? Okay. Counsel Prong?
This is, this is why I was just, you know, after meeting on Saturday and going home and viewing it, I come up with a few questions that I, you know, if we're going to pass this and we're going to abide by this, we have to be cautious of, of what we do. You know, this section wasn't in the last bylaw where it says 2611, members are individually responsible for any personal legal costs incurred during the complaint process. So, you know, if, if I get up here and I argue with Counsel of Arred and then, you know, you say something wrong, it's code of conduct and I feel, well, I have to get a lawyer, you know, we're here, you know, on behalf of the citizens, you know, and just because we get upset, should, should we not have the same benefit of staff? Like if, if staff argue, they, they might be able to get legal advice. You know, it shouldn't be always on our dime. You know, we're all here, elected officials for the citizens of Charlestown. So we shouldn't have to pay if, if we do break a rule, either knowingly or unknowingly. I asked the question this weekend, 2413, and you know, our, our legal authority is here tonight. Can I ask, what does that mean? The principles of natural justice must be observed? And so I Googled it and I said, well, what are the principles of natural justice? You know, because I, I was told that, that, you know, these things, it's not a criminal case. So, you know, my, my experience, you know, wouldn't happen. So when I Googled it, it said, you know, the number one thing is you're to get adequate notice in all, in all policies. Second is a fair hearing and the third is, is no bias. So, you know, in the old bylaw, it states any member of council who alleges a contravention of the code of conduct must not be disadvantaged because of such action. So again, you know, you don't know what's going on. You do things here with, you know, a feeling of moving forward to try and get some answers and, and things happen. So a question comes back to process. You know, what happens when process is not followed? The code of conduct is strictly set as a process of, of what we must follow. So if we're going to sit here tonight and pass this, you know, there's a process in place of step one, step two, step three. And what happens if the process is not followed? You know, what recourse do we have? We're sitting here in good faith. We're going to pass a bylaw thinking that the process will be followed. But if it's not, what happens? You know, what happens when council makes a decision when false or misleading statements were given to them in the decision-making process? Again, council's sitting here, they believe, you know, they were given some information to be true. They make a decision with their best interests and their belief. And then it finds out that, you know what? It's not true. So, so we don't have that in this bylaw of an appeal process. There's nothing to do that if you're wrong, how do I appeal it? You know, where does the bylaw state a resolution of council will be voted on quickly or publicly? So a lot of times when staff, you know, they interact with other staff and there's, there's problems, it's kept quiet. But in our council, you know, front page news, you're, you're at the, you know, the, the, the public knows what exactly is going on. So I, I find this bylaw could be, could be improved, these, these questions answered. You know, why does any breach of this code of conduct be public? So I, I have a, I have a lot of questions which I tried to answer, you know, in, in, I'll just read you here. Just bear with me. I know we only have a few minutes.
Don't rush it out, Counsel Prong.
You know, it, it says in 2413, in part, the member of council who is the subject of an alleged contravention must be given all relevant information in regard to the allegation and an opportunity to be, to respond and be supported if the member so desires. So I Googled supported and what does that mean?
Counsel Prong?
What?
Are you, you're reading the old bylaw?
The old bylaw?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, that's still in here.
Right. But we have the new bylaw in front of us.
Yeah.
Where, where, where is that in the bylaw?
Well, it's a different number.
What number is it?
I'm going by the.
Which point?
Natural justice.
It's in there.
That's what I just asked your lawyer. Where is it?
Well, it's in there somewhere.
No, well, it's, it's in the old one because I, I read it.
Well, I have to get the new one. Just where is the number?
What section was it under, Counsel Prong?
Well, in the old one, it's 2413, isn't it?
Yeah, 2413 is the old one. So it changed this one.
So it'll be under breach.
Both of them say.
Natural justice.
About being supported.
Yeah.
So when you Google, what does supported mean? It means, one, to bear all or part of the weight. And two, give assistance to especially financially, to. of the weight, and, two, give assistance to especially financially to enable to function or act. Now, that's just a couple of Googles that I did, but when you read this bylaw, in my experience, this doesn't happen. You know, I had asked to be supported, and, and basically, I was turned away. So, we're up here today, and we're going to pass something with process, and we, we alluded to it at the front of our, our meeting tonight, well, you know what, we have to go by process. So, I understand process, but in this bylaw, when process is not followed, what's the recourse? You know, why have this bylaw in place if, if it doesn't matter? You know, that's, that's what I'm saying. And, and we're here tonight, we spent three hours mulling over it, I got somewhat of an answer, but it wasn't, it wasn't helpful. And I look at, you know, just a couple of questions that I have, and if we, if we pass it, then we'll be bind by it, or we'll be blinded by it. So, I think, you know, I, I'd like some more time to come up with a solution to, to these questions that I'm answering or asking. I tried on, on Saturday and they weren't asked. You know, I asked, you know, numerous times, what if process is not followed? What do we do? It's not answered. So, what's the sense of having the process if it's not followed? So, you know, I, I don't know what else to say. I, I can't support it the way it is. You know, I, I know there was a rush to support it or first reading, but how can we pass something if it's not binding to us? No appeal process, you know, I, I think it's flawed.
Counsel McCain?
You know what? I think that that's great valid points, and I think that obviously, if there's people that are still questioning them, then why are we rushing? We can bring it back and have further discussion around some of these questions unless people feel, I mean, we still have a code of conduct, we can take the time to look at some of these things. I'm okay as the committee chair to do that. I mean, I feel that this is a, a very important document that we all have to be on the same page with, for the most part.
It's a police tool for us. Counsel Bernard? It's, it polices us as how we treat each other and work within this chamber, work within the community also. Your question, Counsel?
I guess, you know, just comments, I mean, I mean, the lawyer was here and she explained everything for the three hours. And I know some of the questions Counsel Duran was bringing up was to, to context of what happened to him, and she said clearly, we weren't talking about that case. She was trying to answer the questions she's asking, but generalities. Um, you know, I, I, I don't see anything here of why we wouldn't follow the process. Um, and as far as, as having support, financial support, I think, you know, at the end of the day, does taxpayers want their dollars being spent on somebody that had a breach of, of either harassment policy or conduct policy? We have the policies, they're in front of us. Two years ago, the lawyer met with us when the new council got together, she laid it out clear, it's in the MGA, here's the rules, here's the policy. So, if, if there's a breach of policy, then there was investigative report, and that went on for about three months. So, I, I personally, I think that the code of conduct and the harassment policy worked. And I'm not sure, uh, to, to kind of perceive and say, well, what if it's not followed? Well, I, I think it's in, it's in here that, at the end of the day, when, when the report comes in, council meets on it, and then it's done. So, as long as the process is followed, and the process was laid out. That's my thing.
So, the intent here, which is also is to refine the process, everybody's aware of what it is, and that it will be followed henceforth going forward. There were some questions last time raised, so again, it's clear, it's well laid out, the lawyer walked it, you, everybody through it. If there's other issues that need to be changed, that can be done through another amendment, or if the council can afford those concerns, we can ask to get answers back for the committee. But in the interim, it is done and, and put into the format now, so it's very much process-driven.
And I think the, the other thing I could add, Your Worship, is the whole idea, it, it's all driven in respect. And as we get at the heat of conversation in council chambers, you know what? Too bad. You should have respect for your fellow councils. So, if you're, if you're going to step in line, that's what the code of conduct's for, and that's what the harassment policy's for. So, that's what they're there for. So, that shouldn't happen in here.
So, under the old code, it was 24 subsection 13, in the new one, it's 26.7. It's a little more refined. So, Mr. Mooney, if, if a staff member does have an issue with a counselor or some staff, is it up to him or her to pay for his or her own legal fees?
Well, typically, legal fees are, in, in, in something like this, it's not a legal proceeding, so typically wouldn't be a requirement for them to do that, typically wouldn't happen that way.
To get legal advice?
In, in a case of, are you referring to like a harassment?
Could be.
That kind of thing? Typically, not. They would, if, if they had questions, I suppose we could use the, the city legal advice on that, but typically, you know, there's no legal advice that's sought.
Go through the process, or if a, if a member of staff lodged a complaint, then it goes to HR, and they then go through their process, and then it kicks into the, the process, the council provides for themselves, the code of conduct, and we go through that. So, one jumps into the other, Your Worship.
Yeah. So, they pay for their own lawyer if they want to get a lawyer?
There's no cost for lawyers, Your Worship.
What?
There's no cost for lawyers.
Does the city?
It's process-driven, Your Worship, and the fee doesn't pay, it goes through the process as laid out, and if there's cost incurred because of the process, then the city incurs that, but as any other person is eligible to lay a complaint against a member of council or staff, it can be done, and it goes through process, Your Worship. There's no cost to the individual as they go through process. If there's stuff outside of that, then that becomes their cost, Your Worship.
So, the process would involve the claimant and a respondent, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, the respondent pays his or her fees and the claimant does it?
If he or she feels he, he or she has to go there, Your Worship.
Okay. Counsel Verard?
Thank you, Your Worship. Again, going back to the process, so if, if steps are indeed missed during the process, I mean, maybe a clause is added to the, to the bylaw that, or the policy that would, that would suggest that it restarts.
Good point.
Just a safety clause in there, that, again, if, if, if someone determines that the policy hasn't been followed to a T, that the process just restarts from the, from the start.
The intent here is the follow process, and there was issues last time raised, whether we did it, didn't?
Yes.
It's clearly, so what the process is going to be?
Yep.
Once you pass it, this will be the process.
Yeah, but I'm, but I'm saying...
No ends, no buts.
I, I get that, but if, if the process, and listen, nothing's perfect, I'm saying if a step is missed?
Yeah.
It'd be great if there was a little clause in there that said that, that the thing has to be restarted if a step has been identified as being not adhered to.
It may be a difference of opinion there as well, so again, we have to deal with our...
Based on a legal opinion.
...counselor, and to go through that process. And if it's, if it's quite broadly understood that it was missed, then obviously, we would go through that process. But right now, this is put in place to make sure we don't miss those processes. But we can seek a, as we always do, legal advice should there need to be.
Counsel Duran?
Like I say, this, this last code of conduct had the process in place, as does this one.
Yeah.
What you're supposed to do, you know. So, if that's missed, so, so what? So, if, if there's a couple of counselors that may be coming involved in a code of conduct issue now, so would they be so quick to say, well, you know what, you have to follow the process? Well, we had to follow the process four years ago, and we'll have to follow the process this month and next month. So, what I'm saying is, this is flawed, because there's, there's no, there's no recourse if you don't follow the process.
Just like Greg's, Counsel Verard said, yeah.
That's right. So, so it's basically, it's worthless if you have someone to, to not follow the process.
Okay. Well, Your Worship, I just want to clarify one thing.
Could we just ask legal counsel, because legal counsel's...
I, I typically try it on the tele, unless I'm asked a question, but...
We'll ask.
I do hear you kind of talking in circles around there being no recourse, and it would be a very rare occurrence, but, but there is. Typically, decisions of council, there's a statutory provision that provides a right of appeal, the most common one being on planning decisions, for example, go to IRAC. But where there isn't one, and if the person who's affected by a decision of council, in this case, being the person who would be the subject of the complaint, if they're dissatisfied with the process, then they're able to take that to judicial review with the Supreme Court. And that would be their process. And that would be, that would take into, and this is what, if they have identified an error of natural justice, to your point, Counselor Duran, failure of the right to be, or a failure of known, it's any of those kinds of procedural issues that they feel has not been complied with by council, and they are unhappy with decision, then they would collect a judicial review of that decision.
And, and if you don't get that appeal, you can continue to appeal up.
You can appeal up to the court.
That's right.
You can go to the court.
So, in my experience, you know, you, I'm just cautioning council that if you do that, it's nice to say that, well, go to, go to judicial review, but that comes with a $30,000 price tag. You know, so, so a counselor like myself, if you want to do that, then you, you pay the $30,000.
Correct. Though at judicial review, typically, if you're successful in your judicial review, the court will award you your legal costs back from the...
Pre-...
On the special party.
Yeah. So, that's, that, what I'm saying, that's a gamble on, on a counselor that's making that a year, right? So, you're saying, okay, if I, if I'm, I'm wrong, or I'm wronged, I feel wronged, I'm going to go there. So, that takes your whole year's salary away from you. So, what, what I'm saying is, can we not make something in this bylaw? Because, like I say, you know, my experience, or the experience of any counselor that has to do this in the coming months, you know, if the process is not followed against you, then where, where are you going to be? That's...
Yeah. So, Mr. Forbes?
All these words, just, I'm just finishing, like "supported," they're, they're great in this bylaw. But when you ask for support and get nothing, what's the sense of having that in there?
Yeah. So, Mr....
I'm just talking to the lawyer, just, just...
Well, no, are you done yet?
Just answer that one question.
You want that question answered?
Please.
Did you get the question?
Yeah, I do, but I don't know if it's particularly a legal question. I mean, you Googled the words "support," I mean, it's an ambiguous word in terms of what it means and what that looks like. And, I mean, there's lots of ways you could, you could turn what the code of conduct says into how it's enacted, and it's, you know, it's one of those issues that kind of falls in between the words, how it's played out on the ground. So, it would be one of those things where you'd have to look at it in retrospect, in terms of what was the supports provided, and were they sufficient in terms of the language of the bylaw? And difficult to prospectively decide what support, what adequate support looks like.
Okay. Like I said, I, I appreciate it, and like legal says, in "supported," what it means, I can give you five reasons this way and five that. So, we have this legal terms of what supported is, but really, it doesn't mean, you know, it, it might mean something for me, but when I ask the question, no, that's, that's no good. You know, this, these bylaws are legal documents, I understand that. They're, they're very hard when you need them to, to come through. But that's just, no, that's just by law.
So, John, did, did we do a pair review with other code of conducts? I thought we did that. Did we not look at other jurisdictions?
That's correct.
Are we in the same field right now?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so, if, and again, Mr. Forbes, what, what Counsel Duran is talking about, is inserting a judicial review in our bylaw. If...
Of course, not necessary.
Because we already have a judicial review, that's part of the system.
Because we have an active address.
That's right. Counsel Duffy?
Uh, maybe if there's confusion or a dilemma over the word of "supported," in the, I don't have the bylaw in front of me, but we have a...
It's on your desk. It's on your desk.
Oh, okay. Uh, we have an area of definition, we just define what we mean by "supported."
Support. Good point.
And it doesn't include, it doesn't, it doesn't include financial. The only way you're going to save your money is keep your nose clean.
Counsel McCain?
Well, I think that's why we did Saturday, too, so that our legal could talk us through every step. I, I think we can all interpret our bylaws and stuff differently, but we did the very best we could to give everybody equal opportunity to put in our thoughts and our concerns and have her talk us through, and, you know.
Okay.
That's all I want to say, okay?
Counsel...
It's also, I'll say something like that is difficult to craft in advance, because you don't, you just don't know what the situation is going to be. So, maybe support in that situation looks like having like an EAP counselor or something like that, or maybe it looks like access to a peer group or whatever. It could look like any number of things. So, it's one of those things that the, sometimes the more you try to define it, the less elastic you make it, and the less supportive you make it. So, it's, it's, it's a different, and that's a constant quandary, trying to grasp something like legislation, something like bylaw.
Yeah.
The more specificity you have, the more constrained you are.
Correct.
So, while, while sometimes the benefit is that it gives you the express right to, you know, do or have something, but you only have the express right to that one thing and maybe not some other things would be equally helpful for you. So, it, it's just a constant issue, drafting issue that all draft, because of bylaws and statutes, come up against.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Counsel, Counsel Twill?
Yeah. So, I, I don't know, John or Mr. Forbes can help. So, when we're talking support, issue comes up, goes to Human Resource Committee. And the resource, Human Resource Committee making determination as to what resources are available to the committee, whether it be more internal work done, or seek legal advice. And legal advice, is that opportunity afforded to elected officials as well as, say, staff or vice versa, or whatever the case may be? The, the question I have is, is there an equal level playing field? Because you never know when you're going to find yourself in a dilemma. It could be small, it could be big, it could be far-reaching, it could be too far down the road, and then all of a sudden, you're in the major dollars. So, is there an equal level playing field when it comes to resources, whether it be legal, whether it be someone doing an investigation, or whatever the case may be? And is that offered to both person who's filed the complaint and, and the person who's got to defend themselves?
Counsel McCain?
Well, I think, I think Karen, no, and I think Karen explained that the other day, Counsel Twill. This is kind of way, what this bylaw is, and that's why she went down and explained kind of each section by each section, so we were really clear on what it is that we do have to follow. It's not as much as when we make mistakes, it's more how to...
No, that, that's not the question I asked. The question I asked is, are the same resources available, whether it be legal?
Yeah, we don't pay for our staff's legal advice. We don't pay for the council's legal advice.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, it is an equal level playing field?
As far as my information, John, would you correct me if I'm wrong?
John, I believe, Counsel, that it is. I, I think complaining and respondent, there's a process in place so that it's, it's fair and equitable, and we ensure that it's a fair process to both parties.
Okay.
Okay, and that, and that's a determination that the committee makes, right? The other resort, no?
That's in the policy.
That's operational, it's talked about.
Yeah, I think it's spelled out in the bylaw.
Okay, okay. No, I'm just, I'm trying, okay. Frankly, no expert when it comes to this.
Okay.
I'm trying to understand it. And then, the other question I have is, I think Bob might allude to it, is, is there, is there an appeal, is there an appeal mechanism in place so that, let's say, let's say the process was not followed, so that elected official does have, or staff person, does have that comfort zone knowing that, well, yeah, we went through an exercise, but there was too many discrepancies and disparities in the process, and I don't feel that it was, it was followed properly. So, yeah, I know there's judicial review, I understand that, but I mean, you're talking major, major dollars. I mean, you know, I mean, we're not in the big leagues here, we're not, we're not members of parliament, we're not cabinet ministers, provincial level, where you have all those resources at your disposal. I mean, at this level here, you sink or swim on your own.
Yeah.
So, so the question I have is, is there an appeal mechanism in place? So, you can ask, you can ask for that review.
Yeah.
Whether the council does the review, the committee does the review, I'm not sure. I just, I want to...
As a council, Counsel Twill, what I'll tell you is that if we had all, when full council's there and discussions opened?
Yeah.
I would hope that, as, as a council, we would look and, and be able to professionally look at the, and to say whether or not we went through that. So...
So, you appealed to the council?
Yeah, just want, let, let her answer.
Yeah, it is the council. It, it would have been the council when we went through the process.
Right.
There were six of us that showed up...
Yeah.
...to go through the process.
Yeah.
And we spent a lot of time, and there was a lot of discussion, and a lot of advice...
I'm not talking about a particular case.
No, okay. Well, kind of, we are talking...
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Can we, okay, can we just get a legal opinion?
I'm not asking about a particular case.
No, no.
I'm just trying to understand how this thing works.
We know, we know. Judicial review, same thing, is that...
Well, I, I mean, I understand that Counsel Twill's question be, is there, rather than going to the courts, is there another level of appeal?
Yeah.
And the way the bylaw is written, no, there's not, but...
There you go.
The first instance, the decision-maker is council.
That's right.
So, I can't imagine who you would appeal to.
That's, that's my point. Where would you go after council?
That's the question I'm asking.
Judicial review.
So, so there it is. So...
There is none. Bobby's correct.
So, so, so there is no appeal mechanism in place for a counselor that might say, or a staff person? or a staff person, equal level playing field, you know what, I, I, I went through my notes, I don't feel that this thing was done fairly, if, there was, like I said, there's a lot of discrepancies, and a lot of disparities in, in the process, so what recourse do I have? Well, the only recourse, and I think you said it, Mr. Forbes, down to Water Street.
Yeah.
Geez, I mean, you gotta, you must take the brainstorm with you, because it's gonna cost a lot of money.
Yeah.
So, there's no appeal...
I don't think we've ever done that since...
But I think, I think what we discussed on Saturday, Counsel Bernard, is that there is clarity on, on the, to perimeters that we're working with, like, I'm pretty sure that is there.
There's clarity there, and it goes through the HR, and the HR manager, he goes through it step by step, and if somebody doesn't like it, at the end of the day, you have, you have the process, and yes, it is Water Street.
Yeah, and I think...
But it goes through a system, it goes, and it goes through the Human Resource Manager.
Okay.
I've never talked at my committee for 30 minutes, which tells me there's still discussion about this Code of Conduct personally, I mean...
We went over this on Saturday, right?
We've been going over this for a year.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure.
Do you want to go with the first reading?
Yes.
First reading?
You have to ask questions.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
What's the point of order?
So, just before I go, appeal mechanism is, you don't come back to council, you get out of Water Street.
It's a judicial review, correct, Mr.?
That's what our bylaw is.
That's my current understanding, and I'll just acknowledge, I just got this five minutes ago.
Okay, John, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Shall it pass? Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Can you give me that there, sir? Eight, two, okay. I know, it was Counselors Duran, A. Twill opposed.
Your worship, resolve that the bylaw be now approved as the city, as the city bylaw, and that it be entitled the City of Charlestown Council Code of Conduct bylaw 2020cc01, and that be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, moved by Counsel McKay, signed by Counsel Yankoff.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Kate, those against, please raise your hand. Two against, eight to, opposed, Counselors Duran and Twill. Okay, is that it, or do you have anything else?
I hope not.
That's the floor for long time.
I sure it is.
Okay, do we want to go on to the next report, and that is, yep, Protective Services. Do you want to start there, Counselor Duran?
Sure. Well, gentlemen, Detective Emergency Services Committee, met on August 24th, notes from our meetings, our arena package, just a couple of quick points, that five new members have completed their firefighter Level 1 course, and CFD orientation, and have joined the respective districts. We have Connor Rooney and Rakish Bootham, please, if I can pronounce his name, I'm sorry, they're in District 1, Andrew McCray, Brandon Mitchell, and Debbie McGinnis are in District 2. On the policing side, I'd just like to say that the training has started again, Use the Force instructors course is scheduled to begin with the Police Academy at the end of August, so it's already on the go. And our drone pilot training will take place in Slumon Park in September, and I'm excited to get that into play so it'll help protect our citizens. Also, a nice shout out to the Charlestown police officers who attended the Canadian Lebanese Association of PEI vigil held at Victoria Park, they were there to show support and honor those who killed in the devastating blast in Beirut. If you have any questions, I'll try my best to answer them, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Dr, Counsel Twill, and then Counselor Duffy.
Thank you, Counselor Duran, for your report. My first question there is, Fire Chief Randy McDonald, as you know, Chief, ever since the fire taking place in Harley Street, regarding that building, and some of the, some, some of the assessments and evaluations that were concluded in that, in that whole exercise, one of the, one of the recommendations that committed, committed that evaluation and assessment is to bring in a bylaw for sprinkler system, so that any new buildings being constructed in our city would have sprinklers throughout the entire complex, regardless of what size the building is. And I wondered, Chief, where we're at with the sprinkler proposed bylaw?
Your worship, Counsel, Counselor Twill, we continue to meet with staff, as a matter of fact, we have another meeting tomorrow to get their valuable feedback into the, into the bylaw revisions, and we want to make sure that we have equipment certain as to what we want as a team going forward. Once we complete that, then we'll be going off to legal to get a review there, and then coming back to committee as a whole, and then the council.
Thank you, Chief. My second, a second question I wanted to bring up is, first of all, I do want to congratulate the Charlestown Police Department for the work in Houston Street, and Houston Street, and apprehending that particular individual, and some of the challenges, somewhat dangerous challenges that, that the force had to deal with. One of the questions I have, and we threw it here last, last week, was with regards to the alert system, and the mechanism of the alert system versus Twitter. And I understand Deputy Chief McConnell at the Police Department had used Twitter as opposed to the alert system, and I raised the question here last week that, with regards to Twitter, not all of our citizens, as you know, are on the Twitter system. So, my question is, in your review, after, after completing that case and apprehending the individual...
Counsel Twill, just on that issue, I think that was an issue that we discussed behind closed doors.
Okay, that's fine.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I know, but I'm answering the question...
This is an operational issue, and so if you wish a question to be asked, if you can give it to us, we'll get you an answer, but again, it falls under their operational piece, we don't want to interfere with that process.
It was in a closed session, and I think that, you know what, for the, just for this...
Without that, they can't hear you.
We can't hear you, yeah. Just for the professionalism of the department, I think if he forwarded something like that to a question, Deputy Chief, you could get back to him?
Yes, your worship, we would.
Yeah. Counselor Duffy, do you have a question?
Thank you, your worship, thank you, Counselor Duran, for your, your report. I'm back to the same old thing, I don't know what's going on here, I really don't. I hear Counselor Cloud over here, I hear Counselor Ramsey behind me, I hear various counselors saying, we have speeders, we get it all the time from our residents, we have speeders in Victoria Park, we have speeders on Brighton Road, we have speeders, we have speeders everywhere, and they don't seem to be getting caught. And I bring it up almost every second month, because, believe it or not, I like to give it a rest now and then, but, let's face it, like, I really don't understand, I wish somebody could sit me down and explain it to me, but we had, in the month of August, we had 26 setups of radar in the City of Charlestown. Twenty-five of them were north of Belvedere Avenue, one was south of Belvedere Avenue, and this was on every month, although I only remember every second month, and it's always Beasley Avenue, which is in Counselor Cloud, you're the sole representative that gets radar coverage, and I just don't understand, I mean, it's all north, it's Lower Marpeck Road, Salisbury, Lower Marpeck Road, Highland, or Highfield, Kensington and Arterio Road, the only one is Beasley, where they get three, so they, they ticketed, the police officers ticketed 128 people, 125 of them were caught north of Belvedere Avenue. It makes sense, because police cars with the radar are not south of Belvedere Avenue, they caught, caught, caught three people, three different people, so we had 2.5% of the tickets, people south of Belvedere, had 2.5% of the tickets written, and 4% of the people stopped, so, like, could I leave it with your committee, which I'm a member of, Counselor Duran?
Sure.
There's something wrong here, there's not a balance of coverage, at a minimum, there's not a balance of coverage.
Sure.
When 25 and 26 are north of, north of Belvedere, and the densest population is south of Belvedere, and we hear day in, day out, with Soys on the phone, the tennis courts, the ballparks, speeding, 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 so it gets a little hard to take, especially when it's getting worse instead of that. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you.
Counselor Yankoff?
Yes, you can.
I appreciate it, I appreciate, you know, you are a member of our committee, and you're more than welcome to bring those points of view, and any ideas that maybe could help your area, or the other citizens of Charlestown, we welcome input from you at the committee level, and I think, you know, we all are allowed to give input, I don't know why you wait till, till you come here. I noticed in the, in the minutes that the motorcycle traffic and the setups they had were in Victoria Park, and downtown, where they keep the motorcycle noise down, you know, so I think you try to get a balance of where you're gonna get some speeders, they, they're trying their best. The last couple of years, we've been asking for, for more policemen, they're being overwhelmed with, with calls, you know, whether it's, you know, instances, you know, that arise, they're very, they're very pushed to keep our citizens safe, and I think they're doing a great job. Now, in the speeding aspect, they do try to do their job as best they can, but sometimes they're overwhelmed, I've talked to some of the officers, you know, they're, they're busy, they're busy policemen. So can we come up with a better idea? We certainly can, welcome your input at the committee level, come up with some ideas, that's where we can talk to the, to the chief and the deputy, and, and maybe brainstorm to get some ideas of where they, you know, can set up speed and, you know, traps and things like that. So, sure, we'll, we'll take it back to our committee for this month, and we'll see what we can do, maybe we can make you happier, you know, we'll, we'll try our best, that's all I can say.
Thank you, Counsel Duran.
They don't seem to be too busy to set up north of Belvedere Avenue.
Uh, is that a question to me, or...
No, that's a statement.
Okay, so, we can listen...
You know, this is about the fifth month in a row.
So, bring it up at the committee, where you attend, but you don't say anything, but you bring it here.
We will.
So you're welcome to bring it up at the committee.
Because I've got colleagues here that are in the same boat.
Yeah, we will then.
Anybody wants to have an idea, or a request, send me an email, or email the chief or deputy, you know, with your concern, and we'll try our best. Like I said, you're in budget time, we need more officers, I'm pushing for more officers, it got pushed back, you know, you want things, like, the city's been growing in thousands and thousands of people, and we ask our fire and police departments, you know, to do more, do more, do more, 10 more thousand people, so, they're, they're stressed, you know, they need help, and that's why I come to council.
Thank you. Counselor Yankoff, do you have a question? Counselor Yankoff?
For Counsel Duran, perhaps, the Fire Chief, is there any update yet on the apartments being allowed, the electric barbecues? Have I missed that, remember there was some work, a lot of people were asking if they were allowed to have an electric barbecue on their decks?
Correct. In the report, you'll see where that's noted as well, where there's a draft letter sent out in the CIL, from our last meeting, and would have been the meeting of the committee two months ago, I believe.
Okay.
So, one of the actions coming out of that meeting was for a draft letter to go forward.
Okay, thanks.
Good question.
Thanks.
Counsel McLeod?
Thank you very much, your worship, thank you, Counselor Duran, for your report. Just wondering, would it be possible to, and it might, it might have already been done with Chief Brad there, the meeting I had with the stakeholders of the gravel dollars in concern, especially in 1 and 2, but particularly all over the city, really, I'm wondering if any update I could press, I could present the minutes along with Tim Kaiser as well, and, because he was at the meeting as well, and just to kind of have a little conversation about, because we, and even maybe Alex from planning, or even Greg himself, because there was some topics covered there as far as what jurisdiction the board goes versus the city, and, you know, I think we need to keep pushing, there isn't much there, there's not much meat on the bone to protect the resident from a rock flying from a truck, so I'd like to keep pursuing that, but I think it's important that the committees, the committee gets updated on just exactly what our conversation resulted, so I'd like the opportunity to come in if I could.
Oh, anytime, anyone's welcome, anytime to come in and bring forward, you know, a question, concern, or, or better yet, an idea that we could maybe work on, right? It's always open.
Keep it posted on the meeting, please.
Sure, whenever we, we put it in stone there.
Resolution there? Oh, sorry, Counsel Bernard, do you get a question?
I do a question for Counsel Bernard, I'm just wondering, Counselor Duran, the amount of police officers that we have in the City of Charlestown, do you know the number of them?
Amount in the whole department?
Seventy-two.
Seventy, seventy-two, sixty-seven, I might go to the deputy, he might know exactly.
Seventy-two.
Yeah, we have 62 full-time officers, and depending on the time of year, number of casuals, and, and summer staff, so, but 62 full-time sworn officers.
And so, Counselor Duran, do you know, for a population of a similar size of the City of Charlestown, how many officers are in other jurisdictions?
I don't have those numbers right on me, but I know we're below the national average, is that, am I correct in saying that, Deputy?
Yeah, a little bit 14 below the national average, and a bit 7 below the regional average.
Okay, so when you compare it to other, other jurisdictions with similar population?
That's correct.
We're lower. Don't you say?
I'm sorry?
If, so for similar populations of Charlestown, we have less police officers on the...
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
And just to respond, Counselor Bernard, you know, we are the capital city, so on the weekends, or, you know, a lot of people come into events, whether it be the rinks or whatever, so our population goes up quite significantly, you know, whether it be Christmas shopping, or whatever, so, we have our, you know, 35 to 45 residents, plus when people come in, there's a lot more people that you deal with, so...
Okay. Couple of resolutions there, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, your worship.
Okay.
Moved by Counsel Duran, signed by Counsel Ramsey, that the public works manager be authorized to cut grass, remove any garbage, and any other materials or debris, clean up and property disposed of the same at the owner's expense at the following properties located at 76 Douglas Street, PID 361337, and 17 Walden Avenue, PID's 397083, in accordance with the terms of dangerous hazards and unsullied bylaw of the City of Charlestown.
Question?
Question called.
Okay, all of those in favor, please raise your hand. 10-0, Tracy.
Your worship, move Counsel Duran, signed by Counsel Ramsey, that the public works manager be authorized to remove a derelict vehicle as determined under the dangerous hazards unsullied bylaw by a definition at the owner's expense on the property located at 103 Bradley Point Road, PID 396200, in accordance with the terms of the dangerous hazards unsullied bylaw of the City of Charlestown.
Question?
Question called.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Tracy, 10-0. Okay, there you go, sir.
Close our reports.
That's your report, thank you, Counsel Duran, thank you, Deputy Chief, and thank you, Deputy Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, Council Advisory Committee report, Counselor McLeod from Ward 2.
Thank you very much, your worship. Council Advisory Committee met 20 August 19th, and the draft, the minutes are included in your package, I just want to bring everyone's attention there that on September 10th, committee members requested via an email to indicate support for a resolution to appoint members to the Charlestown Food Council, as recommended by the Environment and Sustainability Committee, so timeframe was a little, little rough there, so we want to make sure that this committee gets, gets rounded and get going again, so there is that one resolution. Move forward, that's my report, any questions, I'll try to answer.
Counsel Duran?
Thank you, my monthly question.
September 25th.
Is that good enough for me?
I should have said something, maybe, just the question, he believed, is he wanted to know where we were with the advisory committees and standing committees of council.
September 25th?
September 25th.
It's my birthday.
Lunchtime?
It'll probably be longer than lunch.
Bring your own lunch. Bring your own lunch.
You don't even pay for lunch now.
It's a very scheduled meeting.
Okay, you want to move that resolution, you want to get...
No, I'm good to go, Counsel Duran, answered.
Your worship?
Okay, yeah, great.
Okay, good.
Moved by Counsel McLeod, signed by Counsel Duffy, that the following appointments be approved for the Charlestown Food Council effective September 14th, 2020, Bernie...
Plord.
Plord, Chair, Megan Adams, Brad Droual, Phil Ferrero, Sheena Matthew, Karen Murchinson, Morgan Palmer, and Colleen Walton, your worship.
Okay, question?
Question called.
All those in favor, raise your hands.